Good evening. The November 28th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the Clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Ben.
Here.
Councilmember Newsma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Saffron.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Reverend.
Councilmember Hatakris.
Here.
Skip Reverend.
Councilmember Vell.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Here. All members having answered the call of the role in one way or another, we have a full complement and therefore quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations, of which I have one proclamation declaring today Morris Dino Robinson Day. So I'll read it for the benefit of the community. Whereas Morris Dino Robinson Jr. is the production manager at Northwestern University Press and holds a BA degree in communication design and a minor in African-American studies. And whereas in 1995, he founded the pioneering Shorefront Legacy Center, an organization that he still serves as executive director. And whereas within Shorefront, he has authored books, facilitated subject-specific speaking engagements and exhibits, consulted on community-based archiving, organizing and programs, and collaborated with organizations involved in transformative community initiatives. And whereas this work has generated massive strides, both in the research and documentation of African-American history in the North Shore and also in the education of our communities about this history. And whereas over the last 20 years, Dino built a collection measuring over 500 linear feet illustrating the histories and contributions of the local Black communities in Chicago's suburban North Shore. And whereas he co-authored the report Evanston Policies Directly Affecting the African-American Community, which established the historical and legal foundation of Evanston's historic local reparations program. And whereas after more than 25 years of transformational service, having built an extraordinary legacy of service, education, research, and leadership, Dino Robinson has decided to depart from his position as executive director at Shorefront while continuing to participate in the organization as an advocate and member of the Board. Now therefore I, Daniel Mayor of the City of Evanston, Illinois, do hereby proclaim November 28th, 2022 as Morris Dino Robinson Day in the City of Evanston in recognition of his extraordinary legacy which has forever changed our community for the better. Now, when I have the honor of giving these proclamations, we always are eager to bring up and recognize those who are being honored or celebrated in some way. It's not always easy. For instance, tonight, Dino wasn't able to make it in person, but we have him here on Zoom. I want to just briefly flag that two weeks ago, when we had a proclamation commemorating Cyndi McGamara Rose's 100th years of anniversary, we actually had some members of the sorority here in the chamber, but I was given misinformation about that and so they weren't invited to come up, which is something that I regret. But we always do really appreciate having an opportunity to hear from those who are being celebrated. So with that, Dino, thank you very much for making the time to join us via Zoom and would love to give you the mic.
Thank you so much. I'm really honored about this recognition. It was unexpected. My mother should be there and if it's possible, she is, I would love for her to accept that proclamation on my behalf. Without my mom, without my dad, I would not be doing the things I've been doing with Shorefront and for the community. And I want to recognize the fact that, you know, that my mom is there to celebrate this I don't know what else to say. This is a wonderful, wonderful honor and I hope that I just did right by serving our community of Evanston in a way that is beneficial to all. So I thank you so much for this honor and I don't know what else to say, really. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for all your wonderful work. And if Mr. Morrison's mother would be willing to come up and be recognized, I would really, really appreciate that.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. I don't know if he can see this. No, I don't know.
I see it. I see you.
Oh, you see it? Okay. All right. Okay.
I have to say, I'm really bummed that I'm not there. I mean, this is all excitement. I'm really bummed that I'm not there, but this is really exciting.
Do I speak? Okay. I'd like to make a few remarks about Shorefront. As a board member, I have been for 25 years. I've served in various capacities, but always willing to lend a hand even at the last minute. I just want to say that Shorefront has been unique in so many ways. Its outreach has started just from the community and from one person till now the Smithsonian Institute in Washington DC and people in Pembroke, Illinois, where he once went and did a study and helped them with their history and Winter View, Florida, where he went and talked about their history. So now let me just say that lately, he's been on the reparations committee and now Evanston is on the map as starting a process of reparations for the people of Evanston. And the Smithsonian Institute was here two years ago, digitizing Black history of some of the residents here in Evanston. And they were very eager to get started and to understand, like, this is the computer age and your photos might not last, but this digitization process will make your history last. And they sat and they waited and this went on for a week or two. And then now, we are going to have a digitization process going on in Shorefront. The space has already been made available and Smithsonian is coming to install the equipment for that. Also, another innovative thing, what are the historical markers that have been going down with the help of the Evanston Department of, I don't know what the department is, but they do the drilling for these discs that go into the concrete. And so there's one at our former mayor, Mayor Morton's house, Edwin Jordan's house, Evanston's first Black councilman, one at 325 Dempster and one at 1918 Asbury, which was a former hospital for Blacks at the time. Dominican University is responsible for sending interns to archive in our area, at our Shorefront. And they come and they do their internship and they've been invaluable in doing this service. And so we welcome all kinds of organizations and people to come into our Shorefront and do whatever they do best. Well, now Northwestern is involved with doing, someone is involved with doing oral histories, another way to have history shown. And Shorefront meets with groups of adults and children for presentations regularly. Community displays have been at the Byline Bank, for example. They've been in Deerfield. They've been in Glencoe. So that's another thing that I think that is unique about Shorefront is we're sharing the history throughout the community and the North Shore. We also have publications. One in particular is the YM, History of the YMCA, that has quite an interesting history. And drop-ins are always welcome and possible, but you do have to kind of make a reservation because you can't have everybody in at the same time and Dino can only do so much at once. But he has generally been there on Saturdays and we will be revamping that program. Other history groups have visited Shorefront and have been really amazed by the collections which have grown. I mean, we started at the Family Focus in Evanston on the third floor and outgrew that space and came to the church, the Sherman Church, and we are really pressing for space in there, but we're managing. And thank you for this opportunity for me to speak about Shorefront. It's been a work in progress for many years, 25 to be exact, going on I don't know how many.
Thank you. And I'm sorry to say that Mr. Robinson wanted to chime in as well. Dino?
Yes, if you don't mind, if I can share a screen for a presentation? If not, please let me know.
We can.
Okay, great. I'll keep this within 10 minutes, to the best of my ability. After the presentation, I want to have one other person speak right after I speak and I think it's an important transition to this. So yes, we're celebrating 25 years of collecting, preserving, and educating people about Black history on Chicago's suburban North Shore. And just to kind of give you an illustration, we did start on my dining room table and this photograph here is that dining room table I started on and that is the Shorefront desk in the background with this little archive at its time. And we started in 1995 with a very small budget that came out of my own pocket, but I want to note that in 1997, I was a recipient of the Evanston Cultural Fund for individual artists to do an oral history project and that award was for $7,500. And I have to say, it's because of that money that the City of Evanston was responsible for the launch of what became Shorefront. Without that fund, I'm not sure where it would have gone, but that was the start. So I have to say that this money, well invested for the City of Evanston. We did grow and we formalized. We started using the name Shorefront.
Dino, I don't think you're sharing the slide.
Oh, it's not going?
Yeah, I think you need to be in presentation mode.
Oh, okay. Let me try this again.
Maybe click the play up at the top.
I'm gonna stop sharing and then do it again. Is that better now?
Yes.
Do you see?
Yes, it is.
Screen says it's beginning?
Yes, that's right.
You saw that transition there?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you for chiming in on that. Let me know if there's any other technical difficulties. I hope there's none other after this. In 2002, we used the term Shorefront or the name Shorefront for the first time. One thing I want to iterate, that there was a lot of things that happened in Shorefront that was not necessarily my idea. My idea for an organization was to have a one-word title and I had two board members that recommended the name Shorefront and that was Karen Shavers and my father, Morris Robinson, who both recommended the name Shorefront. And from that point on, we utilized that name. And I hope you see the next screen. About 1997, we moved to a new location, still at my home at 2121 Church Street in the lower level was where Shorefront's office first appeared. And you see that table there? We were 15 members strong, meeting quarterly around this small table in this 400-square-foot space in the lower level of my home. And I had visitors come and do research down there and we needed to grow. By 2008, we moved to the former foster school location and renovated a double classroom on the second floor of that center. The grand opening had a ribbon cutting by then-former Mayor Lorraine H. Morton with about 100 community members showing up to the opening of this space. Here we have multiple programs and expanded some models of what we want to do within the community, including youth programming called the Legacy Keepers. By 2013, we moved to our current location at 2214 Ridge Avenue, which is the lower level of Sherman United Methodist Church, who have been a wonderful partner and sponsor of Shorefront's space since that time. This photograph in particular about our partnerships, these are representatives of both Ebenezer AME Church in Evanston, Evanston's oldest Black church in Evanston, and members from the Smithsonian Institute, National Museum of African American History and Culture, specifically their organized religion department that was looking at Ebenezer AME Church's archives for work they were doing at the museum in DC. And this was our third visit to Shorefront at the time. So we keep growing and every year we have a budget. Before 2015, we operated on an annual budget of less than $25,000. It wasn't until recent years that some grants that we had supporting us have grown and we're really appreciative of that, of the grants that we've had over the many years of operation. We've been quiet about it, but we have been very diligent of how we utilize those funds and how we maximize its use within the community without taxing the community along with that. So we're very fortunate of the many funders that we've had over the years and some who've done continual funding. It is our plan though, to grow with endowment. And we started one first in 2004 that lasted till 2012. It only was about $5,000. We've since then invested at the Evanston Community Foundation in 2019 in a amount of $10,000 and since then it has grown. And we hope to grow this because I think in anything that we do as an organization, if we cannot sustain ourselves financially in perpetuity, then what is the point? And the purpose of that endowment is to utilize that money, the proceeds of that money, to run the operations of Shorefront. Recently, there was a report in the Stanford Social Innovation Review, Winter 2022, that spoke about endowing Black-led nonprofits. And this one quote here really stood out to me as to what we're facing across the nation with endowing organizations like Shorefront and other Black-led organizations. And it's never an issue about not funding too much, is funding too little. A lot of times organizations are funded just enough to just kind of eke by and fail. It is our intent to grow and become self-sufficient. And with that, it is our goal in the coming years to raise $2 million at the Evanston Community Foundation so we have at least a minimal operating budget of $60,000 per year. And that's something that can grow over the course of time that will help sustain the activities and functions of Shorefront. This is a list of, over the years, of all our funders, quite numerous. The ones that are in red have been multi-year funders. One point to bring out is the Richard H. Gruyhouse Foundation that was funding us since 2010 consecutively through present. And one of them, the Andrew Mellon Foundation, was our largest single contribution in our operation funds over the last two years. And we look forward to hopefully growing that relationship further with the Mellon Foundation as likewise with many others that have been funding us throughout the years. How we're used in the community is through a lot of different things. We partner with schools. We have various researchers that come through to Shorefront to utilize their, our archives. And they produce some products out of that, whether it's publications, visas, documentary movies, and other forms of dissemination of historical information. These two people here in the research room, actually, if you remember some of our history, we talk about the Henry Butler Liberty Stable. The gentleman on right is the descendant of that Henry Liberty Stable and he was coming in to do research on his family legacy and also donating some items to the archives about his family legacy. And I thought it was a really engaging environment at that day and I had the opportunity to record part of our conversations during that meeting. And the impact that we have is not just local, it's national and in some aspects, global. But for many things that we have done, we have inspired, of everything, we've inspired multiple communities throughout the United States to establish their own Shorefront-type organization following our model of how to engage community members. As it grows, I've been invited to speak on various platforms about the importance of community-based archives and the importance of independently ran community-based archives that benefit the community and its missions and any initiatives that might happen throughout its history. And so this is some of our partners that we have dealt with. I do have to give a special shout-out to the Black Metropolis Research Consortium, who since 2010 have been an invaluable partner, providing us with training and interns that help process our collection, as well as students at Dominican University, Northwestern University, and our recent partnerships with the National Museum of African American History and Culture, which I believe a member of that, of the museum, has sent a letter of support that will be included in the minutes. If not, I can forward that to you later. With that, I just show you just a quick three-minute video, new promo video, that we have just launched recently and is playing next here. I was involved in one historical organization in the North Shore and I remember when I was kind of sharing with them the importance of the history of the Black communities. The person said, "There is nothing of intrinsic value that the Black community has produced." And I kind of sat back and said, "That's going to change."
Shorefront Legacy is an archival repository. It's also a place for specifically African-American people who were first settled along the North Shore.
Shorefront covers the North Shore area, north of Chicago. We encompass about seven communities.
Our mission is to gather all the information that we can, store it in a place, and to keep it for future history and educate to show people that it does exist.
This is the only repository that holds materials that tells these particular stories and narratives of people and movements that occurred in this particular area. You're not going to find this information anywhere else.
I started with a few file folders back in 1995. Today, we have over 500 linear feet of archival material.
So photographs, paper-related materials, manuscripts.
Garments, documents.
Postcards, handwritten letters, all of these things you're pulling together to tell this comprehensive story.
Each family archives their lives, but often those things get lost as generations go on.
When I walk down here and I see things like the artwork that's on the walls and the pictures, I go, wow, this is from my people.
To me, Shorefront is a space of knowledge. It is a space of belonging.
Shorefront is providing a place where family legacies can live on for future generations.
I'd like to see Shorefront grow into a national group because I think every city needs a Shorefront.
Elders in the community, we need to tell our story.
I want Shorefront to leave behind a legacy of importance and a legacy of its place in the greater American historical narrative.
The story is here, right here at Shorefront.
So I want to make clear too, that I wasn't the only executive director. Actually, I was not even the first executive director of Shorefront. Our first director was Debbie Chest Mayby, who was executive director from 2004 to 2008. And she brought with her a lot of programming, especially youth programming, that she introduced to Shorefront and the community called the Legacy Keepers. After her departure, we acquired Joy and Mr. Russell, who became our second executive director, who served for almost five years. And she really set the tone of how we do fundraising, grant writing, instead of the template for grant writing, that we still utilize to this day. And both of these members are still active from a distance, you know, of the Shorefront. Debbie Chest Mayby, we loaned her to Tucson, Arizona, and started an organization called the Dunbar, which models after what Shorefront has done here in Evanston. And Joy and Mr. Russell has moved on to work at Northwestern University. And for tonight, I want to share and showcase who our next executive director will be. And if you can come to the podium, the person is Larice Bell. And I will start the presentation from here.
Hi, everyone. You didn't realize it was going to be a Shorefront evening, huh? Thank you for having me. I am honored to be here to represent Dino, to represent Shorefront. I want to start by saying Dino Robinson is a hero of mine. He has put equity into action. He saw what wasn't right. He found a solution and he hasn't stopped working on it. And it's an ongoing issue that must be addressed nonstop. Dino shows us that though it takes a village, one person can make a difference and change the landscape of a city and of a country. The work that has been done at Shorefront has radiated throughout the country in forming, educating, and righting wrongs. The importance of story and trauma is deep and many of us live with it. And one of the ways to heal is by telling the stories. That's something that Shorefront has done and continues to do. I'd like to say in closing that Dino's not just a hero, he's a mentor, he's a healer, and Shorefront is bringing equity to storytelling and it's a seminal place to be. I know that Evanstonians like to be in the lead for what's right and good. Let's stay in front and continue to offer support to the heart of Black history, Shorefront Legacy Center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on your new role and we all look forward to working together.
Thank you. I do too. Thanks, all.
That ends my public announcements. The next item on the agenda is the City Manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, City Clerk. I have two brief announcements. First, I want to briefly share that our work continues on the employee report highlighting workplace concerns and issues. We will share a roadmap later this week outlining steps already taken and our efforts in the coming weeks and months. We will also provide a public webpage showing the city's progress on various initiatives and projects. I appreciate the employee group for offering to meet to discuss the report, our next steps, and how we move forward together. Next, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Edgar Kano, Director of Public Works, for a brief
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Biss, Deputy Clerk Sheik, and City Manager Stowe. I'm pleased to introduce our new Public Services Bureau Chief, Noel Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez comes here from the Village of Schaumburg, where he was field superintendent. Prior to that, he spent over 10 years at the Illinois Tollway in management. His new role here in responsibilities, he will oversee five divisions, the recycling environmental division, the greenways division, forestry, traffic, as well as streets, and he will also be managing our snow and ice program.
Thank you, Mr. Kano, and thank you, everyone, for the warm welcome. I'm really excited to join the City of Evanston. I look forward to making great contributions to the organization and to serving the residents of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're welcome aboard and we're very excited to work with you. The next item on our agenda is communications from the City Clerk.
The following expressed opposition to Resolution 119R22, Item A4. Ken Brietta, Camille J. Walker, Michelle Stern, Anna Luche, Jeff Smith, David Rand, Surja Hernandez Jr., Jared Diaper, Catherine Potts, Douglas Sharp, Andrew Wimmer, Pat Bernard, Catherine B. Watkins, Nancy Sharon, Robin, and Erin Brown wish to vote to fully fund the pension. Michael James Schramm expressed opposition to Ordinance 111022. That's it.
Thank you very much. This brings us to public comment. This evening, there is around 30 people seeking to give public comments, so everyone will be given a minute and a half for the be given a minute and a half for their comments. We begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person, and then we'll move on to those who signed up online. So the first speaker is Rebecca Luzetter, who will be followed by Denise Young and then Timothy Schoolmaster.
I think those folks signed up for the committee meeting or intended to sign up for the committee meeting, other than Mr. Schoolmaster.
So is either Rebecca Luzetter or Denise Young still here?
They're certainly not here. I don't know if they're online.
In that case, we'll go on with Mr. Schoolmaster, who will be followed by Jack Mortel, and then Mary Ann Larry Gavin.
Good evening, Members of the Council, Manager Stowe, Deputy Clerk Sheik, and Mayor Bis, and more importantly, the taxpayers of Evanston. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. With the projected passage of the budget with some possible amendments, you have an opportunity to make a bit of history, or at least to change it a bit. One of the required line items of this budget are two tax levies for the police and fire pension funds. Both, as now proposed, are insufficient to meet our needs, and more importantly, to begin to pay down the huge pension debt a 50-year succession of city councils has allowed to accumulate. If my presentation on the 14th clearly illustrated, compound interest is definitely not your friend. By any accurate measure, that debt of approximately $280 million outstrips your bonded debt of only $200 million. The compounding interest charges this year are over $18 million, finance charges that should make every Evanston taxpayer livid, but still having to pay because of the misguided decisions in this chamber over many years. How these levies get funded is up to you, of course, but I especially note the obfuscation, hidden surpluses, and lack of transparency in the disposition of the personal property replacement tax proceeds.
15 seconds.
All that we have had literally dragged from staff's clutches this year. You fully fund your IMRF employees, and you don't quibble with contributions to Social Security Administration. We are in neither. Why have you perpetually shortchanged your public safety professionals, fire, and police who daily put themselves in harm's way for you so that you will not have to?
Time.
Explain that to me if you think you can.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jack Mortel, who will be followed by Mary Ann Larry Gavin, and then
Before I start, since there were three less people, shouldn't we have a little bit more time, I think? Now you divide it differently. Well, good evening. Thank you once again for the opportunity to speak. On Sunday, I sent an email to all of you with the documentation backing up what I have outlined to you at the last three council meetings. That documentation includes the numbers and actual budget pages straight from 20 years of City of Evanston budgets that are currently on the City of Evanston website. Not my numbers, City of Evanston numbers. My mission here has been to save the City of Evanston taxpayers countless tens of millions, and Timmy keeps reminding me, Jack, it's hundreds of millions of dollars, and future property tax responsibility. The path to this can only be accomplished through the City of Evanston first funding the fire and police pensions at 100% and not the current 90%. Saving the taxpayers this kind of money, that should be your mission as well. There's no other way to stem this pension tide. Lots of things have been tried, you just got to pay. There are a number of members of Evanston Police Department and Evanston Fire Department here this evening. I've had the distinct privilege of working side by side with many of them. I never experienced any of them giving anything less than 100%. That is true of any and all of Evanston's firefighters and police officers. Once they take the oath and proudly wear the badge.
15 seconds.
They give 100%. While they provide protection for all of us, day in and day out, 24/7, 365, they are willing to put 100% of their life on the line when duty calls. Not 90% of their lives on the line, 100%. Isn't about the time the City of Evanston do their part and finally, once and for all, stop this shell game and fund the police and fire pensions at 100%. The money is there without raising property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Ann Larry Gavin, who will be followed by Dave Ellis, and then
Is this okay? Good evening, Mayor Bis, City Manager Stowe, Deputy City Clerk and City Council Members. We are Mary Ann Larry Gavin, longtime residents of Evanston. We founded the Evanston Roundtable in 1998, and until mid-2020, we were editors of the newspaper. We come in support of historian and shorefront founder Morris Robinson Jr., whom nearly everyone in the community knows as Dino. Evanston, the North Shore, and beyond have benefited from his vision, dedication, and perseverance. By interviewing people, gathering documents, collecting photographs and artifacts, he preserved the history that others had allowed to be forgotten. His careful chronicling of Black history on the North Shore and particularly Evanston preserved a long-ignored part of the community. He presented the contributions and accomplishments of many Black residents with the distinction and dignity they deserve. These findings also shined a light on Evanston's history of racial discrimination. Further, Mr. Robinson's generosity in sharing the information, writings, and photographs he gathered has enriched us all as Evanstonians. On a more personal level, the Roundtable has benefited from nearly two decades of his generosity. He wrote stories for the Roundtable, created a Did You Know series on Black history which ran for a few years. He wrote stories on Black history for some of our history magazines, and shared historic photos and writings from Shorefront for our magazines, our newspaper, and our new history book. We are glad the city is honoring Mr. Robinson and his immense gift to the Evanston community.
As Mary indicated, I join in her remarks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dave Ellis, who will be followed by Jeff Cohen, and then Darlene Cannon.
Thank you, Mary. Mayor Bis, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Dave Ellis, 7th Ward, resident, city firefighter, paramedic for 34 years. I've been working over 30 years on the police-fire pension funding issue, and thank you for seriously addressing our pension liabilities and some solutions to address this. The history, the city's history regarding our pensions has been not good by previous councils. How did we come here? Well, I'll just give you one example that I was involved with. In 1993 and 1994, the city passed two budget years with a 0% tax increase, 0 percentage going into our pension funds. And they used the proposed contributions to our pensions to fund the 0% increase. So that's two years times 0. You can do the math. When you introduce 0 into math, it compounds. I talked to Eric Anderson at the time, at length, he was the city manager then, and told him this is financially irresponsible. He told me, "Dave, what we're going to do is we're going to raise the sales tax a quarter percent, and we're going to put that money into the pension funds." I said, "Mr. City Manager, you can do whatever you want, but that's not what the law provides for." But he did do that for two years. Then the money went to the quarter percent tax hike, went into the general fund. Property owners have always paid.
15 seconds.
Have already paid over $50 million in compound interest, and as was mentioned earlier, it could be over $700 million. We are already taxing property owners to fund our pensions. To pay a second tax would be a nonstarter. Thank you for working on this important issue and for supporting 100% funding. We have the money to do this already, and thank you for supporting the properties owner's best interests. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeff Cohen, who will be followed by Darlene Cannon, and then Tricia Connolly.
Thank you all for hearing my comments today. My name is Jeff Cohen. I'm a resident of Evanston. I'm also a financial economist. I hold degrees in political science and finance from the school that's down on the South Side. And I've worked for 30 years in economic consulting. I just want to make three quick points about tax relief and its relationship to pension funding. First, and some others have said this, it's really important to understand that funding the pension at less than 100% is introducing a kind of a compound interest problem. It's like not paying your credit card off every month, and if you've ever had to do that, you know how painful that can be. Second, I wanted to say that, you know, the proposal to increase a new tax, whether it's half the funded needed, 2 million, or whether it's 4.5 million, sounds pretty small compared to a $400 million budget, but taxes have a way of sticking around long past their useful life, and they're hard to get rid of, and they rarely go down. So I think if there is any surplus at all, we should be looking to draw from that. Brings me to my third point, which it sure looks to me that the PPRT, the Personal Property Replacement Tax, is in surplus. That may be because it's been underfunded for a long time, despite a mandate from early on. So I don't want to suggest that I know where we should be making cuts or what trade-offs we should be making, but I think that it's important to know, you know, that I think a tax increase is sometimes necessary, but I'm having trouble seeing how that's the case here. So I suggest we take out our highlighters and our red pens and go to work looking for surplus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Darlene Cannon, who will be followed by Tricia Connolly, and then Cecilia
Thank you, Darlene Cannon, 2nd Ward. We want the police and fire pensions funded at 100% so that we can stop the financial hemorrhaging. You were sworn in to represent and protect, and this is how you do it. Pay the pension from the surplus and don't raise the taxes. It's been a hard year on people financially, and even harder, and even a harder year is predicted with a looming recession. We should be showing compassion and sensitivity to the many residents that will be facing financial hardship in the upcoming months. Also, going forward, as guardians of the budget, you have an obligation to do better at ensuring that our money is spent wisely. And also, as a reminder, the dollars that was wasted by not fully funding the pension could have helped struggling families pay rent or even buy food. These type of decisions that are made only hurt our marginalized residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tricia Connolly, who will be followed by Cecilia Hunchar, and then Dan Philippides.
Good evening, Mayor Bis and City Council Members. It was disappointing to see that a personal letter to all of you from the Chair of the Finance and Budget Committee received so much traction last week. Several community members, including myself, witnessed the vote by the committee unanimously recommending full funding of the police and fire pension. Why did the Chair's personal letter take precedent over the committee's recommendation already shared with you? Mayor Bis, when Pension Bill SB1, which you co-authored at the state level, was found unconstitutional by the Illinois Supreme Court in 2015, you stated, "The state of Illinois and many of its local governments are still facing serious fiscal problems, including significant pension debt. I look forward to working with all parties to find ways to ensure that adequate resources are available to properly fund our pension systems in the context of a responsible budget that funds crucial services. Our public employees, our government bodies, and our taxpayers deserve nothing less."
15 seconds.
Mayor Bis and Council, we're all counting on you to use the approximate 4.5 million that sits in our surplus to make a full payment for the fire and police pension this year and years thereafter. It is costing residents millions of dollars more every year that we don't fully fund."
Time.
Mayor Bis, if you really stand behind what you stated in 2015, that our taxpayers deserve nothing less, then please fully fund the police and fire pension this year with existing surplus, and.
Thank you very much.
Let's add it as a line item in future years and get it together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Cecilia Hunchar, who will be followed by Dan Philippides, and then Ray Friedman.
Good evening, and a greeting to my alderman, Mr. Nusma. I've had the opportunity and privilege to get to know many of the people who are seated here this evening. You are dealing with professional people who are degreed, educated, certified in paramedicine. And one thing I really want to focus on is they, both the police and fire, serve the entire community in Evanston. They do not serve a particular segment of any age group or any group. They serve everyone. They undergo training and classes continually linked to Evanston Hospital, which is, I believe, number one trauma center. I'm trying to emphasize the high-quality people we have working here. Many of the people who have spoken have discussed the compound interest. I don't have to repeat that. If the money is there, pay the price. I come from an era where you pay your bills before using discretionary funds or taking money out of the system for discretionary payments.
15 seconds.
We have many nonprofits in this city, and that's tough to deal with when you're paying bills. Just a curiosity, I know there are other suburbs further north where they, when an ambulance service comes out to someone who is not part of that city as a resident, they increase their bill by 50%.
Time.
I'm asking you to fully fund if the money is there, because these people serve 24/7, the entire community, not one segment. And thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dan Philippides, who will be followed by Ray Friedman.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Dan Philippides, 9th Ward. I'm here on behalf of Pension Board President Darren Doherty to read a statement. Good evening. My name is Captain Darren Doherty, and I speak to you tonight as the president of the Pension Board, an Evanston resident, and an Evanston taxpayer, and an Evanston firefighter. I've served on the Pension Board for nearly 14 years, 11 as president. In that time, we have cultivated strong relations with city staff, worked hard with various mayors and city managers to address the pension liability, and made strides together with the city council to make progress in solving this issue. We've compromised and advocated for change. We've worked together. We stand at another crossroads, and I use "we" intentionally because this is a problem that affects all of us: residents, staff, elected officials, and public safety employees. We can move forward decisively to address the pension liability in a way that minimizes the effects on taxpayers of Evanston, or we can move forward with a status quo, watching the cost to the taxpayers grow higher and higher over time. What we can't do is refuse to move at all. The municipal league itself, the lobbying body for the Illinois cities, believes that PPRT should be used to fund the pension systems. We should heed their advice. The council did not cause this unfunded liability. We can recognize that. But through the trick of time, this council is in the position to act with courage to address it. This council has the responsibility to address it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman, who will be followed by Dorian Price.
Good evening once again, everyone. I wanted to talk about the budget, thinking that we would have the continuation of the budget hearing, which was a month ago, that we were supposed to continue, that we never did. So thank you to everybody who spoke on the pensions, and congratulations to Dino Robinson. My focus has been, for several years, public comment and what it means to everybody, and how do we take public comment and get some feedback to the residents for whatever they're talking about? And instead of having feedback or dialogue, as it says, the definition in your agenda for a public comment, you added four sentences recently that says that anyone can be banned for public comment for disorderly conduct. So does that mean that it's more important than, rather than what somebody says in, it's not important as how they say it? So you want somebody to, everybody who I've been listening to for the past five years has been pretty concise, more than myself.
15 seconds.
I want to say thank you to Jack Mortel for doing all the research on the police and fire pension fund. Please follow Mr. Mortel's advice in funding the pensions before. in funding the pensions before it gets further out of hand. We need your definition of public comment. What would you like to accomplish with public comment or public hearing?
Thank you very much.
What is your definition of public hearing? We need to be on the same page on this or not.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Doreen Price. Sure. So we now move to the online public. Those who signed up online. We'll begin with Cindy Castro, who will be followed by Ally Harned and then Jackson Peller.
Hi, everybody. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Perfect. Good evening all. My name is Cindy Castro, and I'm the manager of the outpatient behavioral health clinic at Ascension St. Francis. But I'm actually here today as culture of the mental health task force of Evanston. To give you background, the task force is composed of about 22 mental health and social services agencies that serve our Evanston community. We came together at the beginning of COVID under Mayor Hagerty's guidance to be a part of the Incident Command Center, and we also serve as a working group under the nonprofit monthly leaders meeting. We have continued to work together way beyond the command center and have worked on various initiatives. With that said, on November 10th, the Social Services Committee voted on recommendations to address gaps in mental health services. Top of the list is a for-profit agency. Let me repeat that again, a for-profit agency. With the nonprofit sector making up a majority of the services provided to the most vulnerable and under-reserved populations, and many of our partner nonprofit agencies having a long history of deep investment in this community, for lack of better words, this was a complete punch in the gut. The day after the meeting, we received emails on the experience and just reactions to that meeting. Shaming and disbelief were some of the words that were described. And when I saw the video, all I could say as well. Aside from recommending a for-profit, let's look at the process. Did the committee really vote that night when clearly they were not prepared? Did they vote when members of the committee stated they had not reviewed the applications and felt unequipped to even offer anything to the discussion? We are very respectful of the process and everyone's time, but we want the process to be equitable for all of the agencies. So I'm here to ask you to table this. Please do not vote and send it back to the committee to do a more thoughtful process of much-needed services and make recommendations based on a more elaborate discussion and really exploring what the needs in the community are and how those needs can be met. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ally Harned, who will be followed by Jackson Peller and then Tina Payton.
Good evening, honorable everyone. I'm Ally Harned from the Second Ward and also a school social worker in District 65 and also a member of the Mental Health Task Force. I wanted to speak tonight to offer some thoughts that I had about the Social Services Committee meeting on November 10th. I watched the meeting, not as someone who had a stake in the decisions as either an applicant for funding nor a referring partner, but as a mental health practitioner in District 65 who tries to be aware of resources that are available for referrals for students and families in Evanston. In that respect, I enjoyed learning more about the agencies, some of whom I've collaborated with for years and some of which I'd never heard of before. I even took notes to share with my social work department in D-65 so that I could add agencies to the list of resources that we share with families interested in seeking therapy services outside. In another respect, though, as a member of the Mental Health Task Force who has been aware of this funding process as it has developed for many months, I felt confused watching the actual decision-making process and had more questions than answers afterwards. I wondered how the recommendations were made by staff as it wasn't clear if there was a point system or different factors were considered, even though it was very clear that a lot of time and work had been put into the process by staff. I wondered how the decision seemed to be made before the meeting even started as the three agencies recommended by staff ended up being three agencies funded. I wondered how the committee chose a for-profit therapy agency that is relatively new in town over longstanding nonprofit agencies that have decades of serving Evanston's residents. I wondered how the decision was made in the meeting by the committee without hearing anything from the referring agencies about what they thought of the applicants. I really do appreciate the work that the volunteer committee does. That was an 89-page packet in a three-hour meeting. But these are really, really important decisions that the committee is making, and they need to be made with the utmost care and thorough preparation. As a relatively new member of the Mental Health Task Force, I'm one year in and not the long haulers like the rest. Something that I've learned is how critical the funding is for the sustainability of the essential work that the nonprofits do. And as a longstanding social worker in District 65, I can say how invaluable the work of the nonprofit mental health agencies is. I hope that the city council makes a decision on the recommendations of the committee tonight, but send it back to give it more time for a robust and thorough consideration. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jackson Peller, who will be followed by Tina Payton and then Mike Vasilko.
Thank you, Mayor Bis, members of council. My name is Jackson Peller, lifelong First Warden, and I'll attempt to keep my comments in favor of fully funding the pensions by using the surplus funds fairly short. It's been said a couple times tonight how fully funding the police and fire pensions would cost approximately $4.5 million this year, staying at a pretty steady rate for future years. And it's been said numerous times how not fully funding the pensions up to this point has been costing Evanston taxpayers greatly. Fully funding would be a historic first step that would save Evanston taxpayers, and I'm fully in favor of that. However, like others have said again, I see no reason to raise taxes to do this. Evanston's tax dollars have already created a surplus of, I'm not sure of the exact number, something well in excess of $4.5 million. We can use some of those funds to make the necessary payments this year and make a plan and a backup plan to keep the funding going for future years. We can get on track right now with the money we have without raising taxes. Fully funding these pensions would be a historic step. So let's do it, but let's make sure that we do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tina Payton, who will be followed by Mike Vasilko and then Kathy Hayes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening. Black people, pack your bags because Evanston is not for you. Like the previous speaker's presentation, you are history, but you are not the future. What has the city done for you? They haven't done anything for me except harassment. The mayor called me a year ago, December 2nd, and said he would get back to me regarding acquiring funds for my lost rent and damages to my building when two connections for the homeless clients fired shots in my building and destroyed their apartments. I guess to the mayor's defense, he didn't say which year he would call me back. Black people, have you seen any reparation money? It looks like a lot of showboating, hand-waving, hand-clapping, ribbon-cutting, and congratulating, but no results. They are asking for another $2 million tonight, but where is the other money? No money should be given out until, one, it's held in a bank in an interest-bearing account; two, no non-for-profits should be handling money or involved; three, need a third party overseeing the money; four, all money should be combined, donated, sales, and city-funded and reported to the public as a whole; and five, income and expense reported quarterly.
Fifteen seconds.
How about no notification for the Fifth Ward School possibly tearing down Fleetwood? There's a meeting next week, but I bet you they've already decided what they're gonna do. There's no school, townhomes, new businesses are not for you. ARPA money, TIF money, CDBG money, has the city given any black people any of this big money from these funds like they have for white people? Besides HEKII, ARPA money and TIF money, gone, all to white people, millions at a time. Black landlords matter. Stay woke.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mike Vasilko, who will be followed by Kathy Hayes and then Patty Kapuch.
Thank you. I thought the issue of funding, fully funding the police and fire pensions was a done issue. So I'm surprised there's so much behind-the-scenes discussion about. It's still questionable. It's just so simple that we, Evanston, Evanston City Council, the Evanston government in general saves money by fully funding the pensions. So that should be, the debate should end if there is one, and you should just simply fully fund the pensions. Tax increases are not necessary. I understand from audits, there's over $40 million worth of surpluses that could be spent in part for that purpose. There's nothing, my second point is there's nothing new that I've seen in any of the attachments regarding climate action. This council has been so inconsistent about climate action. Our climate action plan does not include all of Evanston, and it only includes a few people, businesses, and a few public buildings. There's 30,000 households that could and should benefit in the same way as everyone else when it comes to how this money is being distributed.
Fifteen seconds.
I'm sorry. In all due respects to Dino Robinson, I want to congratulate him. There's nothing wrong with his presentation other than the fact that, Mr. Mayor, you allowed 25 minutes for a presentation that wasn't scheduled, and you've cut everybody off, and it's me now, who came to the same podium, tried to do the same public comments.
Thank you very much.
You're being very unfair and inconsistent, and you set a standard of 20 minutes per person. So I'm about to finish my comments.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kathy Hayes, who will be followed by Patty Kapuch and then Mary Rosensky. Ms. Hayes?
Hello, and thank you very much this evening. I will try to be brief as possible. Congratulations to Dino and all the work that he has done for categorizing black history in our community as a year-round project in decades to come. Congratulations to you, Ms. Bell, for your appointment as the new director. It is in great hands and stewardship. The reason for me coming to council this evening is to articulate my objection for ordinance 110022, which is an adjustment request amendment in general offenses for the police department to adopt regarding the city code. In short, this allows a semi truck to come down Custer, turn on Oakton, and go up from there. I have submitted my remarks to the city council members who are on this particular ordinance, as I believe cosponsors or collaborators. I have also sent my comments to the city clerk for record. Basically, this is a hazard that does not have to happen. And this is becoming a citywide issue as to what to do with these semi trucks that come in this very dense predominantly residential area.
Fifteen seconds.
We may need to come outside of the box and think of other ways for them to get their service and wares from a depot somewhere else that has accessibility for these semi trucks, not only to protect the truck drivers, but also to protect the pedestrians and residents throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Patty Kapuch, who will be followed by Mary Rosensky and then Chip Ratliff.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Bis, City Manager, and members of the City Council. My name is Patty Kapuch, and I'm the Executive Director of Impact Behavioral Health Partners. Impact provides permanent supportive housing, behavioral health, and employment services for adults living with mental illness. We've been providing services in the Evanston community for 35 years. Like the other speakers on this topic tonight, I have been a member of the Mental Health Task Force since its inception and as of last month, one of the co-chairs. I am speaking tonight, though, in my role as ED of Impact to express my profound disappointment with the recommendations of city staff regarding the two-year mental health services grant funding. For many years, Impact received funding from the city through the Mental Health Board. When that process was changed and the task of funding agency moved to the Human Services Committee, agencies such as Impact waited several years for the opportunity to reapply for city funding. As an organization with deep roots in the Evanston community, we have watched our community's mental health needs during the COVID-19 pandemic increase exponentially, and we stretched our own capacity to serve those most at risk without our formerly reliable funding from the city. In fact, we have not received any funding from the city of Evanston since 2020. According to the grant guidelines, one of the priority populations for this grant included those living in permanent supportive housing programs.
Fifteen seconds.
During the past year alone, we served a total of 87 Evanston residents, 48 of whom were residents in permanent supportive housing, and 18 of whom were referred directly from one of the named referral agencies in the mental health provider application guidelines.
Time.
I ask members of the council to consider where Evanston nonprofits currently contribute to the community by stepping up to continue to serve our most vulnerable residents, often at great cost to the organization as we waited two years for a grant proposal from the city. I would ask that this be sent back to the committee for further discussion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosensky, who will be followed by Chip Ratliff and then Billy Lynch.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council and City Manager. I want to say congratulations to Mr. Robinson. You're not only a true Evanston treasure, but you have made Evanston a better place since you brought your country. You know, it is time to 100% finance the pension funds. And we've been talking about this for years and years and years. And I think we would never not fund every other employee 100%, but why would we do it to our first responders? It makes no sense, especially since we have the $16 million reserve or 16% reserve that we keep for emergencies in case we have an unexpected expense. But then we also have surpluses. Like this year, I think it's well over $14 million. And if this should be a budget item, it shouldn't, we don't need to raise taxes. What we need to do is sharpen our pencils, spend our money wisely. And we don't need so many consultants. We have people on staff who are very qualified and can make decisions and own those decisions. But please listen to Mr. Schoolmaster, Mr. Mortel, Mr. Ellis. Our first responders always are there for us. And I think we can stand up and be there for them without raising our taxes. So thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Chip Ratliff, who will be followed by Billy Lynch.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. I'm the founder of Chip Ratliff Productions, but today I'm here as the President and the President of Board Directors of Shorefront. I'm here on this historic day to congratulate Mr. Dino Robinson, who happens to be my best friend and colleague, and to just let you know of the work and just to reinforce what is needed from the city of Evanston. Today, we need funding, basically. We have Larisse Bell on here as the next Director of Shorefront, but we need funding to make sure that she is adequately paid and taken care of. So I'm not sure if I can even go any further than what's been said today, but please think of the importance of Shorefront, what it has done for this community when you think of funding Shorefront moving forward, making Shorefront a regular line item on the city budget. That's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you so much and congratulations once again, Dino.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Billy Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Manager Stowe, Member of the City Council, Deputy City Clerk, Billy Lynch, President IAF Local 742. Speak very briefly on a referral item for retro pay deferred wages to firefighters that was on the council's consideration back in September, and that was approved unanimously. It's been 70 days, almost two and a half months, since that was approved, and it has not been executed on. This is not a subject for negotiation or for proposals and counter proposals. This is a referral item that was approved of by the city and its council, and it needs to be executed. I'm here to ask this council to provide its explicit intent to disperse deferred wages to firefighters as approved of back in September. We need to have this issue moved on from and focus on other things. So I'm asking this council respectfully to offer its explicit intent to the city and to the union to approve of these deferred wages that were unanimously approved up by the council back in September so that we can move on. I'd just like to close by saying that when COVID hits, the city asks firefighters to do a number of things and step up in a number of critical ways. Firefighters didn't short-change the city. When it's your turn to return wages and do the right thing for firefighters, please don't short-change them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now return to the final speaker, who is Doreen Price.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Clerk, City Manager. I would like to support the police and fire for lots of good reasons in terms of the pension fund and that it should be fully funded. I had a pension. I had a pension, and it was converted into a 401K, and I think pensions are the best thing since sliced bread. So I think preserving it is also preserving the connection of the worker to the people appreciating their services. So respecting that relationship is super important on behalf of the residents here, as well as each one of you who live here as well. And in terms of surplus funds, I repeat several speakers here about the importance of looking how we spend those monies in terms of equity. Equity is a real issue, and if you even think about raising taxes, you're talking about the adverse impact of that, whatever that price is, to someone who's at a low to moderate income level, well, especially homeowners or people who are trying to help with affordable housing and rental units.
Fifteen seconds.
So I would suggest strongly on being unified and prioritizing doing the right thing, and doing the right thing, you know, and you're good. And I used to work in pharmacology and GI research, so I smile when I say that. But yes, happiness does belong to the gut and a spiritual aspect of that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for the evening and brings us to special orders of business. Would someone care to make a motion regarding item SP1?
I move item SP1, adoption of, I don't know where it is on my agenda, but adoption of the budget order, there it is. I move item SP1, ordinance 99022, the 2023 budget ordinance. Second? Is that you?
Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance 99-0-22. Councilmember Hatakati, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly, hold on one second, I've got to reset the clock over here, but Councilmember Kelly, go ahead.
So I have shared with everybody an amendment to this from myself and Councilmember Nusma. So I'd like to, the amendment is to fully fund the police and fire pensions, and the numbers are there, taking the additional, the additional $4.94 million from the surplus in order to fund it. I just want to make sure everybody has that amendment. I emailed it out.
Councilmember Kelly moves to amend ordinance 99-0-22 as described in an email you've all received. I think the critical highlights are that that would change the police pension payment to $13,295,458, no sense for some reason, and the fire pension total to $11,793,978. So again, that memo, that amendment should be in everyone's inbox as of about an hour and a half ago. Is there a second?
Second.
I will second it as well.
Only one of you gets to. So Councilmember Revel seconds the motion. Is there any discussion now on this amendment? Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in favor of catching up, starting to catch up to where we should be on our pension obligations, with some clarification of terminology. When we say funding at 100%, we're not automatically, in one fell swoop, closing the gap. We're changing the curve. Right now, we're on a curve to get to 90%, and we, I really believe we need to be on a curve to get to 100%. The money that we are proposing to put in to the budget for next year gets us onto that curve. Now, is that curve going to change as math changes, as future councils contemplate new realities and take into account new inputs? I think that will probably be the case. And if we end up with a new formula at some point down the line, this additional $4.49 million, maybe that new formula would have it at 5.2 million, or maybe the new formula would have it at 2.7 million. I'm not so hung up on that because we know we are coming from behind, and it's time for us to start catching up. And using the formula we have at our disposal now is the best we can do at this time, and we do, we can afford it, is what it comes down to. We're fortunate to end the 2022 fiscal year with a forecast surplus of $14 million. That is a result of conservative budgeting, which I think is a good practice and something we should continue to do moving forward. But that $14 million surplus adds to an existing fund balance that puts us well, well above our 16.6% policy. In fact, we're more than double that 16.6% fund balance policy at the end of this year. And if we look at where we're at for the end of next year before taking into account this proposal, we're still more than double our 16.6% fund balance. So we have extra money, let's use that to pay for our pension obligation, understanding that this is not a long-term solution. I want to make that clear. This is taking advantage of a situation we find ourselves in this year, and we may not ever find ourselves in this position again. If we are going to be serious about funding our pension obligations, at some point, like it or not, that's going to require increasing the property tax levy. We're lucky this year that we can, that we have a surplus, a pretty significant one, that we can use for this purpose, and I think that's the right thing to do. But we can't count on having a surplus every year. That's not policy. I think we do need to take some time to think about what that policy should be, reflecting current numbers, current reality, current projections, and input from the actuaries and everybody else. We have some time to do that next year, and so what I'm looking forward to doing next year is fully funding the pension obligation out of our, let's say, standard budget without dipping into surplus or dipping into reserves, even though we, because at this point, we have plenty of reserves, we might, we might not next year. And if we're going to be serious about this, we need to implement a policy that gets us to where we need to go without crossing our fingers and hoping for the best. Having said that, if we find ourselves at the end of next year, or at the end of 2026 or the end of 2027 with a fairly substantial surplus, I think it's entirely appropriate to use at least some of that surplus to make an additional payment on our pensions, much like you might make an additional payment on your mortgage if your Christmas bonus came in bigger than suspected, bigger than expected. But counting on surplus revenue to fund our pension obligations is not good policy. Doing it this year because we have a robust surplus, I think that is very good policy and entirely appropriate. Thanks.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes, well, actually, thank you, Councilmember Nusma. I don't feel like I need to repeat a lot of what you said. You really gave a thorough overview and kind of a guiding star, and so I guess what I'll just add for the public is, you know, we have a council that is, has a diverse point of view on a lot of things, but this is an issue that this council came together on, understood that we needed to change the trajectory and ensure that we are fully funding our pensions for all the folks who put their, quite literally, their lives on the line for the city to make sure that it operates. And so I hope this is something this council can be proud of, of itself, that we're coming together on this, and we have a huge surplus this year, and I don't know, it's better to get that out working for the community and get it out, taking care of the folks who have taken care of us than, you know, keeping it in a big brown bag would a thing to do, and making sure that we're putting that money to work. And so I, so I have nothing else to say. I think we're ready to maybe call the vote on this, and I think we have pretty universal support for this.
Councilmember Sufferden.
Yeah, I just want to ask staff, can anybody give me an estimate on what next year's property tax increase is going to need to be to keep this rolling?
Good evening, mayors, the city council. I mean, the property tax increase varies from individual to individual and the business to business, but overall, 21 numbers which came out, the year we has gone down by around quarter of a billion. But 22 numbers based on the assessors thing, they said it would go up by 30%. So I don't see the tax bill going up first installment because it would be based on the last year, but the next year, second installment, which would be based on 22 assessment, that could be higher because the, in general, the assessment is going to be higher by 30%. Now, again, it varies from resident to resident, business to business. If everyone goes up 30%, generally, you don't see much increase. It depends on, the only thing is when you have this kind of inflation.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I think that you guys are talking past each other, and in the interest of time, Councilmember, is Mr. Desai addressing your question?
My question is, how much additional revenue are we going to have to raise likely through property taxes next year to keep this rolling at the pace that council seems to contemplate that they want to?
In particular, are you talking about four and a half million in pension funding?
Yeah, if we're talking about, you know, this year, we're going to use what we're calling a surplus, and next year, there's not a surplus, and that's going to have to come from somewhere, most likely property taxes. Can you give me any sense of what type of property tax increase we are setting in motion for next year?
I mean, if we think that if council decides to fully fund the 100% cover, and again, I think Councilmember Nusma touched on, that number could change next year, depending on the market and all other things. But if it stays four and a half million, which is roughly 8% of our levy right now, so it would be an 8% increase in our portion of the tax bill.
Point of information.
All right, Mr. Desai, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your answer.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we'll go back to those asking to speak for a second time, beginning with Councilmember Kelly with four and a half minutes left.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out again that this has been escalating, so we're now paying, our resident taxpayers are now paying probably $14 million rather than seven had this been fully funded. So as, should we choose not to fully fund, it'll just continue to increase what they get, what gets levied against our residents in interest and fees. So this is money in the bank for taxpayers. It's also how we prioritize our spending next year, so I think it's hard to say how much will we raise taxes. I understand your question, if it's 4.5, over time, this is obviously going to decrease. But I think we can't really say at this point how much that would necessarily increase taxes. I think it's, you know, it's a discussion of our priorities, and I think this is a very obvious priority that we need, that we need to fund at this point, and it might take priority over other spending. So I think that's to be seen. Thank you.
Next is Councilmember Reed with three minutes and 50 seconds left.
Councilmember Kelly addressed it, you know, this one isn't necessarily a property tax increase, so I don't want to open up the Evanston now tomorrow, and then it's the council on track for an 8% property tax increase. That's not necessarily the case, and really, as Councilmember Kelly, you know, really illustrated there, you know, what is the cost if we don't fund the pensions fully? And what is the ballooning cost down the road? And so I think that's the guiding star to keep, to keep us focused on what the real issue is. Thank you.
Next, with 30 seconds left, is Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just as a point of clarification, we're not voting on a property tax increase tonight. I'm merely suggesting that at some point, increase in the levy is likely going to be inevitable if we want to continue fully funding our pensions, but that's not on the table for tonight. It's a discussion for next year, and it involves a lot more input. Thanks.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role on Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Sufferden with four minutes and 25 seconds left.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate everyone's good intentions, but I would just like to remind everybody that next year always comes. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role on Councilmember Kelly's motion to amend ordinance 99-0-22?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakati?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion passes and the ordinance is amended. Is there any? Well, now the ordinance has to pass, though, so just don't jinx it, guys. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role on the amended 99-0-22?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakati?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion passes. This is for introduction, so ordinance 99-0-22, as amended, is introduced and will be on the agenda for action at our December 12 regular meeting. We now have a number of special orders of business SPs 2 through 8 that are kind of joined together. I would entertain a motion on all of those at once if someone is so inclined.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move items SP2 through SP8.
Councilmember Nusma moves passage of ordinances 100, 101, 102, 103, 104, 105, and 106-0-22. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakati?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, and all of the aforementioned ordinances have now been introduced, and again, each of them will appear on the December 12 agenda for our regular council meeting for action. This now brings us to item SP9. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion?
Yeah, I move, well, I would actually like to, I'd like to move suspension of the rules on this, only because if, you know, you've read the memo, you've seen the police department's on board with this, this is something we've considered previously, the police department has changed their opinion, I think we can save a few moments at our next council meeting by just kind of getting rid of this. So I'll move suspension of the rules.
Any particular rule?
The suspension of the rule requiring us to both introduce and, for introduction and action.
Councilmember Reed moves suspension of the rules to allow for both introduction and action on SP9 to occur tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Kelly, seconds. Is there any discussion, is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakati?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion fails and the rules are not suspended. Now, Councilmember Reed, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll move item SP9, ordinance 110-0-22, amending Title IX, Chapter V of the City Code, Evanston Police Department response.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance 110-0-22. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Kelly, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, oh, Councilmember Reed, followed by Revel.
Yeah, I want to remind us of what this is. This is, you know, the mere possession of a closed canister of, you know, either cannabis or alcohol in the non-passenger portion of a vehicle. At the national level, our president has recently pardoned all folks for mere possession charges. We are, you know, we have a reparations program that is funded through We are, you know, we have a reparations program that is funded through cannabis, and to require, you know, to have a law on the books that arrests people for merely possessing cannabis in a public, either building or area, just seems to not comport with our values. So certainly happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Ravel.
Well, I think it was misleading to say that the police was, police department is on board with this, this proposal. There are three different sections to it, and one section would deal with possession and consumption on private property, and the police department is fine with that. The second one deals with possession in a public place, and so one, one, part one, subsection one, would allow open containers in these public spaces, and our police department believes this would create quality of life issues, and they, they do not support the change to subsection one. They're fine with the change to subsection two. So I, I'm inclined to go along with our police department.
Seeing that no one else is requesting to speak for the first time, we go back to Councilmember Reed with four minutes and ten seconds left.
Yes, I apologize if I mischaracterized my reading of it, it was slightly different. Maybe Chief can explain, but I'm, you know, again, I'm unsure, our current ordinance says that if I were to have a, you know, a canister of cannabis that I purchased from the dispensary and came here to pay my water bill, I could be ticketed or arrested for having that cannabis, that container on my possession. You know, same thing if I had a bottle of wine, and it had, you know, been unquirked and unquirked again, and I have it on my person to come here to pay, you know, a parking ticket or some other, you know, fine. And I walked here with it from Wine Goddess. I went to Wine Goddess, rode my bike here, and so I'm unclear how we're concerned about quality of life issues with that.
I'm in agreement with exactly Ravel, the way you, Councilmember Ravel summed it up additionally. We had a couple other ones that weren't in agreement with.
Okay.
If we were in agreement or not, I thought the question was.
No, I'm sorry, I was specifically asking with what I just named, what are the quality of life issue concerns that the police department has?
We believe that there are quality of life issues with it. Either way, I'm not in agreement with some of it, and we'd like to explain that part of it.
Chief Stewart, your testimony is super important, I think, and we can't all hear you because you're not speaking directly to the mic.
Oh, my fault. No, I'm sorry. I said, we were in agreement with all of it, and I'd like Sergeant Sofia, who's in charge of our traffic unit, who's very familiar with the I B C and the state law, to kind of expand on that, if given the chance.
Sure, sure.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Scott Sofia, Sergeant of the Evanston Police Department Traffic Unit. I appreciate the opportunity to address the mayor, city manager, and the council. With regards to the proposed alterations to nine, five, ten, B, the police department would not object to the added language, added language of upon any public right-of-way. This would, in fact, and we are in agreement, that this would match state statute with regards to the possession of open alcoholic beverages as well as open cannabis products. The police department would object to the proposed stricken language in nine, five, ten, B, however, and this would not line up with current state law. With regards to nine, five, ten, C, one and two.
Just point of information, what is that language that the department does not agree with?
For nine, five, ten, B, consumption in vehicles, the proposed language is to add at the end of that ordinance the language upon any public right-of-way. Adding that language upon any public right-of-way would match the current state statutes regarding transportation of open alcoholic beverages as well as transportation of adult-use cannabis products. However, striking the language on or have on his or her person open containers or in any part of any motor vehicle doesn't in fact conflict with current state law. There's a state statute regarding open alcoholic beverages and the transportation of those on the public way that is citable by a petty offense and a ticket. There's also a state statute in the criminal code regarding the transportation of open containers of adult-use cannabis, again, on the public way, not on private property, and that's a Class A misdemeanor, which is an arrestable offense.
Point of information there. So the state language there, this would match the state language. The state language there specifically says in the passenger portion of the vehicle, and that's why we are striking the, in any portion of the vehicle, because state law says specifically in the passenger portion. And so this would align us with state law.
State law regarding adult-use cannabis states that under subsection B, no driver may possess cannabis within any area of any motor vehicle upon a highway in the state except in a secured, sealed, or resealable odor-proof, child-resistant cannabis container that is inaccessible. So our objection is the fact that this does not match current state statute. Additionally, the possession of open adult-use cannabis products in a vehicle is something that we can currently issue an ordinance citation on as opposed to make a custodial arrest that is in the interest of the police department as well as our citizens to take equitable measures and cite individuals as opposed to arrest individuals. And by striking this language, that becomes a limiting factor for the actions the police department can take, and we'd much rather issue citations when applicable as opposed to make custodial arrests.
So, but in this case, this actually creates a ticketable offense where no custodial arrest would occur, because if this same person had that cannabis container sealed in their trunk, our ordinance still allows you to give them a ticket, where state law, you wouldn't arrest them or do anything to that person. They wouldn't be violating the law if they had a resealed container of cannabis or a resealed container of, they went to Wine Goddess, were taking part in a wine tasting, corked the bottle, put it in their trunk, under our ordinance, that's illegal. Under state law, it's not.
Well, we're saying, under the proposed changes, by adding upon only any public right-of-way, that does make it legal to have the sealed product in the vehicle upon the public right-of-way. If you have that product open, accessible in the motor vehicle, that conflicts with state law, and that's where we would not be in agreement.
In no way, this, for a corporation counsel, this doesn't conflict with state law. This doesn't supersede state law, correct?
It does not supersede, oh, good evening, members of the city council, mayor, city manager, deputy city clerk, Nicholas Cummings, corporation counsel. It doesn't alter in any way state law. I think where folks may be missing each other is our ordinance specifically talks about the transportation and consumption, and one of the edits that is proposed under nine, five, ten, B, deals with consumption. I certainly agree with the police department when it comes to the transportation, and I want to also just point out that we're talking about in part B, that it specifically is talking about consuming beverages upon the right-of-way.
Correct. Part A is about transport, and in part A, it clearly says that you cannot transport any alcoholic beverage or cannabis product within the passenger area of any motor vehicle except in the original container with the seal unbroken.
Correct.
So if anything, that still gives you the power that you're seeking.
By striking the language or have on his or her person open containers, that does take away from that.
No, it says, transport any alcoholic beverage or cannabis products within the passenger area of any motor vehicle except in the original container. So it.
So.
Yeah, yeah, but this is different. It's about consumption.
The proposed amendment would prohibit consumption of alcoholic beverages or cannabis products on any right-of-way, period.
Correct. So you still, you would have the ability to stop someone who's illegally transporting in your eyes?
Correct. Under state law, if somebody is transporting open containers of alcoholic beverages or open adult-use cannabis products in their motor vehicle under section B, that would be legal for us to stop them. So we're saying, once again, we are okay with the addition of upon any public right-of-way because that does, in fact, then coincide with state statutes for the two statutes, the transportation of open liquor as well as the possession of open adult-use cannabis. But I would stand by the fact that we would object to the stricken language that's in the proposal.
But again, if your concern is about transport, you're still not addressing how striking that language has anything to do with transport, how that hampers your ability to ticket someone who's transporting cannabis or alcohol.
But I think we're dealing with subsection C rather than B.
Well, no, he's saying B, and he's saying the stricken.
B, they're fine with.
He just said they're not fine with B.
Councilmember Reed, whether you have it on your person or are transporting it, they're really one and the same. By striking that language, it would still be enforceable under section A, so I'm not sure, quite frankly, how one would not affect the other. By striking that language, there's still an enforceable measure under A.
If I, if I may, just briefly, because I feel like everybody's sort of saying differently the same thing. I think what Councilmember Reed's objective is, at least in this request to make this special order of business, is to prohibit people from consuming both alcohol and cannabis just in, on the public way, regardless if in the car, on a bike, walking down the street, et cetera. Those are, those are the quality of life concerns that I believe were raised previously. Open consumption of these substances is typically what they call quality of life issues. But it still prohibits the transportation in a motor vehicle on the public way. You just can't consume it. So I think that's the distinction, the way that the ordinance is drafted. It certainly can be amended to be, to say something different, but as it, as it's, the way it's drafted right now, it distinguishes between carrying and consumption.
I'm happy to have this mirror state law. In fact, state law is looser, because, right, under state law, if someone put that open container in a place that is not accessible, they'd be perfectly fine to drive, and under our law, it's actually stricter. So I'm happy if the police department wants to mirror state law, then I'm happy to make an amendment to have this mirror state law, because that's what I'm hearing from you all.
Sure. You know, and speaking to the chief, we do want to ensure that we maintain our ability to have an alternative to arrest and make sure that we can cite where applicable as opposed to make an arrest. If there, as corporation counsel is discussing, the ability to speak to the language and ensure that it is not so ambiguous as to be confusing and cause potential issues to our officers in conducting that enforcement, then that's something that we should seek to do before moving forward with this ordinance.
So then I'm happy to, I'll send it in writing, that we're instructing the law department to make an amendment to sections both A and B to mirror state law, which I'm actually perfectly fine with it. It actually gives more leeway. So I'm going to type that and send it to the mayor. I'm seeing a confused face.
So I feel confused because it sounds like you're sending, you're proposing to send some instructions rather than the language of an amendment?
And the sections we're looking at are B and C, not, not A.
We strictly, or at least I've strictly been speaking with regards to nine, five, ten, A and B. There were objections the police department had to language in C one, but that's not something that's been addressed up to this point.
If I could just, I mean, it seems like we've had two different representations from this dais about whether or not the police department was.
There's one clear one now.
Comfortable, and it turns out that there was some real confusion on the part of the person initiated this. I would, I mean, obviously, I don't have a vote up here. I guess that most people don't want to vote until there's clarity on, A, exactly what's being voted on, and B, what exactly the police department position is. Perhaps if someone were to table this, that could create time during which the sponsor and the police department could sit down and then come back, perhaps with agreement, perhaps with disagreement that there's clarity about and folks can make a clear decision about.
I appreciate that. I don't think that, and again, I'm here, we're hearing exactly what the police department is asking for. I, the sponsor of this, am saying I'm perfectly fine with having our language here in A and B mirror state law. I would like us to vote to amend that, to do exactly what the police department is asking on A and B, to still have the option to defer an arrest with those sections, and so I think.
Respectfully, I like time. I mean, I had less than a week on holiday to work on this, and the sergeant, so I would like time to go over it respectfully.
I appreciate that. I will say this special order of business was made over a month ago to provide that time, but again, I would like to amend the language to follow what you all expressed you wanted. All right, unless there's something that, do you not agree with what you and your officer just said, that you wanted to mirror state law?
I would agree with giving me some time, but we're all kind of rushed to go over it.
Mr. Cummings?
I was just going to, in the interest of trying to resolve this, I think, you know, if the direction is for the law department to amend nine, five, ten, A, and B to mirror the Illinois Vehicle Code when it comes to this, I feel like it probably needs to be seen in writing, and it might be prudent for us to wait until December twelfth.
I would like to make those amendments. I'd love to hear what your C issues are.
I'm sorry?
I'd love to hear the concerns with C.
I would like to get back to you on the twelfth. I honestly started looking at this last week before the holidays. I fully had to have him come in. We've been working on it. We're not ready at this point.
Okay, that's just not what the memo said. I mean, that's.
You want to change it. You want to have it mirror, and I would like time to do that. I'm going to try to work with you on that, but I'm telling you right now, I'm not prepared to go forward with it at this point.
Okay, yeah, I'd still just love to hear, you know, what the concerns that were expressed in the memo regarding C are, if someone is willing to share that.
If you guys want to take some time, there's other people requesting to speak. If you want to pause, as you prefer.
I'll simply address under C one, striking the language or have on his or her person or about personal property open containers. By striking that language, we're apparently, unless there's something that can be clarified saying that you cannot consume alcoholic beverage or cannabis products in public buildings, parks, beaches, highways, streets, alleys, sidewalks, parkways, and public parking lots, but the stricken language would allow for the possession of open containers of those products. It would be, the police department's belief that that is a quality of life issue by simply saying that unless we see you consuming it, that there's no enforcement that can be taken. Clearly, if a police officer's present, someone who is going to have an open container of alcoholic beverages or an open cannabis product is not likely to consume it in one of those public places. We have no issue with the stricken language in number two because it's not mentioning open containers of those products. Essentially, what we're saying is that the consumption or possession of open alcoholic beverages, containers, or cannabis products on those public places should remain prohibited as C one states.
Yeah, and my response to that, again, this is exactly what we're moving away from. Consumption in public, again, illegal. Our president just federally pardoned everyone for mere possession. What we are saying is that mere possession of these substances in public should not be a crime. If someone has a joint that they rolled and they put it in a little container and they're walking, you know, to the park, or they're walking, you know, somewhere, you know, back home from coming here to pay a water bill, they should not be in fear of being ticketed or arrested in our city for mere possession, and that's why we put this on the agenda. Consumption in public is a different game. Possession, we should not be arresting people or involving law enforcement for mere possession.
Councilmember Nguyen, followed by Hara Kades.
Yes, I have to say, I am confused by this, and I really would appreciate having two more weeks. I recognize, Councilmember Reed, that you've spent a lot of time on this. I clearly have not spent enough, and I would like to understand what I'm voting on. I don't feel comfortable voting I at this point, and I would like to understand all of the, all of the various permutations of this. So I would like to move to table this until December twelfth.
Second. Councilmember Nguyen moves to table item S P nine to December twelfth. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion to table? Seeing none, would the clerk please?
I'm sorry.
The mere business is not debatable.
Oh, sorry, it's not a debatable motion. My God. Would the clerk in that case please take the role?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hara Kades?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris. With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and this item is tabled to the December twelfth meeting of the city council, and hopefully the sponsor and the police department can connect between now and then and perhaps resolve some of these questions. Thank you very much. This brings us to item S P ten. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion here? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yes.
Sorry, I'll move, oh, go ahead.
Move resolution, S P ten, resolution one twenty-five, R twenty-two, directing the chief finance officer to transfer two million from the general funds to the reparations fund.
Second. Councilmember Burns moves passage of resolution one twenty-five dash. Councilmember Burns moves passage of Resolution 125-R-22. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Yes. I, so this is, this is a special order of business. This council voted to place on the agenda. This has been discussed at reparations committee with various levels of thoroughness and, and, you know, some various levels of support and caution. So this is a resolution that would transfer $2 million from our general fund to our reparations fund. This would allow the reparations fund to take care of the remaining 100 and some odd ancestors who have not yet received funding immediately. Again, these are folks who are well into their 70s because of the criteria to be ancestors. We've unfortunately lost a, a number of these ancestors already, and so I, you know, I think it's prudent that this council keep up with this commitment. If, you know, I think there was an expectation, both, you know, maybe from this body and from the community, that the committee, that this council would give about $1 million a year toward reparations. If we had done that since the inception of the program, you know, this is about the dollar amount that we would have committed to, up until this point. And so this makes us whole on that, that, you know, expectation and maybe even promise that the community held. There, there are some concerns legally around this. You know, is there the potential for increased legal risk? You know, maybe, yeah. You know, how big is that risk? I think that's, you know, something debatable, and I think this is something that this council should take a firm stand on and, and make this transfer so we can make whole those ancestors that we've made a promise to. Happy to discuss this further.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Revel?
So we are, we have already approved transferring, dedicating $1 million from our real estate transfer tax for properties that are sold for more than one and a half million. And that's going to be added to the $400,000 that's already in the budget in the general fund for the reparations fund. So for 2023, the reparations program has $1.4 million to distribute to grantees. That's roughly 40 grantees plus another 16 grantees. It sounds like quite a few ancestors to help work through the process. I know that, I know we've already got all their names, and we know who's next in line to receive the grants, but I think it, it takes a while for each one to be fully implemented. So it, it seems to me that that's probably a pretty sizable workload for the reparations program for 2023. And I, and I guess I am concerned about the legal, the legal concerns.
Councilmember Burns?
As, as far as the legal concerns, I think Council Cummings, and he can speak more to this, did not provide an opinion on how successful a lawsuit would be, but merely that it could increase the amount of people that have standing. My understanding is you could walk into a dispensary, purchase something, and you would have the same standing. And so my thing is if people are going to test this program, they'll do it, they'll find a way to do it. And today, it's more about our own commitment as we, we just, as Councilmember Nusma said, kind of got on a better term to fully funding our pensions. We're not on a good curve right now to supporting this reparations program, especially for our ancestors. The $2 million here, along with the real estate transfer tax, would allow us to pretty much fully fund the, the ancestors, about 122. I want to remind this group that there's 400 descendants behind them that also apply for this program. That's $10 million. So this work is not done yet, and that's, that, that's only the first round, right? There are many people who did not apply for different reasons, who plan to apply once this reopens. So we're not done yet. And this is a small step that we can take to make sure that, that, that we are on a schedule that makes sense, especially for our ancestors.
No one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with three minutes and 10 seconds left.
Yeah. I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Revel's very legitimate concerns about capacity and about, you know, we, we have contracted out with, in the past, SEPA to, to manage this for us, and so there's certainly capacity. That's why we have, you know, workshopped this out to a nonprofit to manage this. And you're right, it does take some time to get through the process and for the senior, for the ancestor to, you know, fully go through the process and receive the funding. And that's why it's important that we have the funding available so we can start moving forward with folks early on. For example, you mentioned the $400,000 that's set aside, and I don't know if it's 400. I think we previously allocated 400. It's in the budget this year, 400 as well. But again, the cannabis sales tax revenue comes in on a monthly? Okay, okay. It's just in the budget? Okay. Well, we have $400,000 there. What I'll remind us, and then the real estate transfer tax again is not, you know, there's not $1 million there at the beginning of the year. It trickles in throughout the year. This would put the money in. And to cover the full, all of the seniors, that would be, you know, three and a quarter million dollars. So, you know, this, this, this puts us on track to make sure that we're meeting that obligation that folks would have expected. As, as Councilmember Burns noted, there are many people behind that are, that are, that are looking for this as well, waiting for this as well. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Burns with respect to analysis regarding the likelihood of success on any sort of merits of any claim. It'd be really irresponsible of my office to, to try and say, you know, without actually having a complaint or any sort of facts or evidence to base it on, to say what, whether a claim would be likely or not. I can only tell you that, as, as I've explained to the reparations committee, that once we take money that is meant for the greater and apply it to the few, and the basis of that contains an element of a suspect class, it increases the chances of not only us facing litigation, but there could be a greater likelihood of success under constitutional analysis alone in those claims. And so that is why my advice has always been conservative on this issue. It tends to be conservative of most issues, but specifically on this issue, because it is so important to our community that the program actually be successful. And rather than being tied up potential and potential litigation so that we cannot pay anyone, it'd be better to pay a few at a time so that, without any sort of challenge.
With three minutes and 40 seconds left, Councilmember Burns.
I think you got, did you have your light on or I'll go next?
Yeah. With one minute and 40 seconds left, Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I'll use that time wisely. Yeah, I appreciate that analysis there. I mean, I do think, you know, there are some things potentially to worry about, but I, I look at our program and the way it's designed. Again, as was stated earlier, you know, does this potentially widen the pool of people who could have standing? If that's a concern folks have, yes. But does anyone who has the intention, who's an Evanston resident, has the intention of trying to foil this program, you know, the same pool that we're widening this to, could still just go to dispensary, purchase cannabis, become someone who, you know, files litigation? The point is that if someone wants to do this, they can find a way to do this. And I think we need to put those ancestors ahead. Again, there are folks who are passing away. These folks are 70-plus years old, and we want to make sure that they are getting, and getting the resources that they are long overdue while they are still here. And we can make this investment and, and make the transfer to the organizations and do right by those seniors. I, I believe in Evanston. I think the residents of Evanston are folks who have shown that they are behind this program, and, and those who are malintentioned will be malintentioned, you know, regardless of what we do here.
With three minutes and 40 seconds left, Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to be clear, too, is, is this, even if the lawsuit were to occur, that doesn't mean that we can't continue, as even Councilmember Revel mentioned, of just, you know, issuing the benefits when money is available. So that doesn't prohibit us from moving forward. So to me-
There, there's, there is the potential. Any sort of lawsuit that would challenge our program would likely include in some sort of injunction, at least temporarily, in which case we would not be able to disperse any funds. This has actually happened in another jurisdiction where they actually tried to use CARES money to fund a reparations program. It's a little different because it was federal dollars. But nevertheless, there was an injunction placed on that program, and so they weren't able to use any money because now it's tied up in litigation. And if any sort of temporary injunction was granted, it would be left in place until we could have a trial and alike on the, on the merits, which could stretch out, again, leaving our ancestors sort of without any sort of relief as a result.
And so any, to be clear, any money from any fund would not be able to be used for this program?
The, the advice that the Law Department has consistently given and also was, was shared with our outside counsel to you all in a memo has always been to do exactly what this council-
No, I want to be clear, because I think you're going in a direction I'm not going in. So I'm saying if somebody were to file for an injunction, we wouldn't be able to spend any money out of any fund to, to support the ancestors as we're, as being discussed today.
That would be my expectation. I can't say definitively whether that would be the case.
If it were granted by a judge, point of information.
Right. If it was, if the injunction was granted by a court pending a trial on the merits, it's likely we would not be able to pay any money in the program.
And that could occur whether they have standing through being a customer at a dispensary or whether or not they have, whether or not they have a different type of standing that we're discussing today. The injunction is something that, a tool that they have at their disposal that they can request from a judge no matter what?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for Council Cummings. What revenue or what funding sources can most cleanly go into the reparations fund?
So this question came up in the reparations committee previously, and the advice is that home rule taxes, generally speaking, if they are allocated by this council during this process, during the budget season.
That would include cannabis tax and include real estate transfer tax?
So there is no home rule adult-use cannabis tax. That's meant, that's the state that levies that and pays it to the municipalities, but the, the city does charge a tax on medical marijuana.
Okay.
So that would be, as an example, a, a home rule tax that this council, if it said, we're going to take those revenues and commit it to this fund, would, would be advisable, similar to what this council has done with the graduated real estate transfer tax. That is a home rule tax that, starting January 1, those, those money, that money, anything over $1.5 million, is going to divert, be diverted to the reparations fund. And just by way of illustration, there could be a commercial real estate transfer that happens in December, closes in January, it's over $1.5 million. All of that revenue, up to $1 million, would go to the reparations fund. And so, yes, it could very well have $1 million at the very beginning of the year. We don't know, but it, it may not trickle in. It may be all at once if there's a commercial building that changes hands.
The fact that those revenue streams, if they weren't directed towards reparations, would go into the general fund-
Correct.
-kind of besides the point. If they go into the general fund, it's part of the pool, and where we get in trouble is if we're taking it out of the pool.
That, yes, that's correct.
If we can divert it before it gets to the pool, we're, we're cleaner, we're better off.
It's cleaner, yes.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
With a minute, oh, Councilmember Reed's time is up, but you've signed, you have a brief comment you wanted to add?
You can go to the person with a minute first and then me.
No, there's nobody else.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Well, then, yes, 30 seconds then. Again, there's arguments about cleaner and, you know, all, all of these other things. There, there's some risk. It was a bold move in the first place for this council to say we're going to do reparations based on race, period. That was bold. That was something that put the city at, you know, if we're talking about legal risk, that was the greatest legal risk that there was. This is just making true on that promise we accepted that risk when we said we are going to do reparations. That's what we said we were willing to stand up and fight for. And so now, when it comes time to actually back up that claim and to actually say that, yes, we are going to fund this, we understood the risk three years ago, or in 2019, when this passed. And so to close out here, I see I'm getting Oscars pulled off the stage. To close out here, you know, we should make true on this. If, if we, I, I, I think we should be ready, you know, I think that representatives here of the reparations committee, I won't speak for Chrissy, but are, are supportive of making sure that our seniors, our ancestors get the funding. I, I hope the rest of this council move forward. If we need a little bit more time, you know, we need a little bit more time, but I think we should be able to move forward with this today.
With two minutes and 40 seconds left, Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, I'd like to hold. I have some questions for Council Cummings that I'd like answered in between meetings. So I'd like to motion for a hold.
It's a special order of business, it cannot be held.
It can be tabled.
Tabled, that's all.
Till when?
Next meeting is fine. What is it, the 12th? December 12th?
Councilmember Burns moves to table Resolution 125-R-22 until the December 12th meeting. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffronin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen? Or, I'm sorry, Harris?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and this item has been tabled until the December 12th City Council meeting. This brings us to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Item A5.
A5.
S1.
S1.
A4.
A4. So, so far, we have A4, A5, and S1. Anything else?
Item-
R1 and R2. R1 and R2. So, so far, I have A4, A5, R1, R2, and S1. Is there anything else? In that case, I would undertake a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of the consent agenda with the exception of items A4, A5, R1, R2, and S1. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffronin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Kelly is recorded, I think, as a-
Councilmember Kelly, did you want to vote on the consent agenda? All right. In that case, with nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the consent agenda, with the exception of items A4, A5, R1, R2, and S1, passes. This brings us then to item A4. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion on this item?
I'd like to move item A4, Resolution 119-R-
The person who moves the motion can't speak or vote against it. I'll just note that. It's according to Roberts rules.
Councilmember Nusma, would you care to make a motion on this, on this item?
Or, they can vote against it. They can't-
I hope, I hope Councilmember Kelly will vote in favor of this, but I'll move item A4, Resolution 118-R-22.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves passage of Resolution 118-R-22. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've covered this at some length at AMPW, but for a brief recap, we have a situation involving imminent, an actual damage to property and potential damage to life and limb. and potential, uh, damage to, uh, life and limb, uh, when trucks inbound, uh, making deliveries to Evanston Lumber, uh, because they have trouble making the corner, making the turn at the corner of Main and Custer Street. Uh, it's, uh, an acute angle, and trucks often have difficulty, uh, making that turn. Uh, we've knocked over signs. They damaged the concrete, uh, abutment to the bridge. Uh, sometimes they actually turn right, southbound onto Custer and back up blindly through Main Street. Uh, so not at all a safe situation. Uh, and we've discussed, uh, you know, I've discussed this with staff, you know, what are, what the other options might be, and there's, there's no really good option. Uh, the best that we can come up with is to route the trucks coming to Evanston Lumber down Oakton Street and have them turn northbound onto Custer, uh, at Oakton, because that corner is a much easier corner to navigate. Uh, in fact, they are allowed to, uh, make that, uh, to, to pursue that route, uh, down Oakton and north on Custer under current city code. Uh, there, even though Oakton is not a truck route, trucks are allowed to deviate from posted truck routes if there are, I'll quote here, "Operational constraints. Vehicles may use the non-truck routes when physical characteristics of the street intersection or viaduct cause operational or safety problems to reach the final destination." So that's clearly the case here. Uh, I, I shared a couple of videos at ANPW a couple weeks ago. Uh, if we have time to share them now, I sent the links to Anderson. Um, but what we're trying to do is prevent, uh, further property damage and, you know, prevent somebody from getting seriously hurt or killed at that intersection. Uh, I understand that moving the trucks to Oakton is not a great solution. Uh, it's, uh, there are no really good solutions here, but moving them to Oakton is, is the least bad of the possible solutions. Uh, we do have schools on Main Street as well as Oakton, uh, so that, you know, argument is, is kind of, uh, um, you know, six of one, half dozen of another. Uh, and the reason we are, uh, at this point is because, uh, we don't want to, we, meaning, uh, staff didn't want to move forward without, you know, the buy-in of all the affected council members. And, uh, Councilmember Harakaris can speak for himself. Um, uh, his residents in Oakton are, are objecting for very valid reasons. Uh, Councilmember Harakaris and I were unable to come to an agreement between the two of us, uh, and even when we asked the mayor to kind of mediate our, our, our conflict, uh, we were unable to make progress and, you know, decided, uh, among the three of us to bring it to council and, 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 and vote on it here. Again, I want to be clear that we are not voting to change code. We are only voting to authorize the traffic engineers to send a memo to the Evanston Police Department Traffic Enforcement Unit that this is going to happen, and please don't, uh, give tickets, uh, to trucks coming down Oakton, as long as they're coming, uh, as long as they're going to Evanston Lumber. They're already allowed to do that. Uh, we don't need this memo to allow them to do that. We do need this memo to allow them not to get pulled over, uh, and to receive a ticket for which, uh, they would, which would eventually get thrown out because they do have a legitimate reason to be there. Um, it, Anderson, you've... I, I emailed it to you, but it's also in the packet on page, uh, three...
Point of information.
Twenty-nine.
Do videos count toward time?
It might be a new tool if it doesn't.
Page 329 of 453. In the interest of time, I'll just, uh, there are four or five videos there. 329 of 453. Almost there. Okay, let's go to, uh, the second video under "Sometimes Trucks Turn South on Custer." Not that one. I don't think it's that one. Back to 329. Thank you. Okay, keep going. That, keep going. That, second. Uh, up, up, no, no.
The first one.
That, there we go. That one. The second. It's the Google link ending in UU8. That'll work, yes. So this is a truck that has turned right and is facing southbound down Custer, but now backing up blindly through, uh, the intersection at Main Street. Thanks to Eric at La Principe for taking this video. Watch right now. Boom, there's a car that fortunately did not get hit. Yeah. We can end it there. You guys get the idea.
So that's the end of your time. Uh, next is Councilmember Harakaris, who I assume will show us pictures of schoolchildren not being hit by semi trucks because they currently don't have to walk past semi trucks on their way to school.
So, um, I just wanted to speak to this a little bit. So, um, I've shared some of these numbers with most of y'all. Um, I think, you know, there's no good place for these trucks to be, um, but when you look at the, um, Oakton versus Main, um, Oakton, um, next summer's going to have a major construction project to kind of try to remedy some of these traffic issues. It's, um, long overdue. Um, when they looked at the traffic study, um, if you look at the numbers for Oakton from Asbury to Chicago, the traffic numbers are 12,700 cars, whereas Main is, from Ridge to Chicago is only 9,000. Um, I think this is, the added impact of the semis will be felt much more on Oakton than it currently is on Main. Um, speaking a little bit to the school situation, um, there, true, there are two schools on Main. Um, enrollment in those two schools is 583 students. Um, Dawes, Oakton, and Shute, there's 1,300 students who are currently enrolled there. Um, for me is, it's the pedestrian safety versus potential property damage. Um, I don't know as, as bad this, as the situation is with that truck going in reverse, um, it's, it's not going to affect a pedestrian. Um, I think the added, um, traffic to Oakton, pass those schools during what's already of, which people in the eighth and ninth ward know is a really crowded, um, thruway is going to be super impactful. Um, not to mention, you know, James Park in the summer. Um, I think we probably need a, a more overall, um, strategy for all streets and all deliveries, I think we should start working on. But I am super, super uncomfortable with giving this resolution, which i- in effect makes Oakton a truck route, because once the business has the information that there, there won't be any enforcement, they're going to send all their trucks, not just the big ones. It's going to be all the ones that show up because it's easy. And, you know, it's been there for 30 years, and they've been managing to, um, make that turn, maybe not all the time, but, um, you know, for the one-offs where they have issues, I think you're going to have 30 trucks going down Oakton all week. So that's, that's my two cents.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Burns, followed by Revel.
Thank you, Mayor Biss. Um, so we take a quick step back. This started off with just wanting to go down Custer, uh, Eighth Warders. We're not happy about this being, uh, making Custer a truck route, uh, and just going straight from Howard to Custer. Uh, the Eighth Ward and, you know, because our artificial boundaries are just that, artificial boundaries, and I presume the Ninth Ward as well have some of the highest, um, have, have the highest rates of pollution, you know, uh, in the city, and so there's environmental concern that we'd, we'd put even more of that burden on the south end of town. Um, you know, I, I, I'm sorry, I know we talked about this a lot, Councilmember Newsma. I don't remember where we landed a few weeks ago, and so I hope I'm not going back on what I've said, uh, to you previously. Uh, but either way, I think it's not, uh, because at the end of the day, this doesn't really change anything. It's already the law. Um, trucks are already allowed to, you know, use this, uh, you know, .5 of a mile if they are, uh, if for the reasons Councilmember Newsma, uh, stated, which is if there's a hazard or other concerns, our, our code allows for that. Um, and what I really think is that, uh, council, that we should vote this down today and, you know, have folks enforce the law as it is. Um, and if Councilmember Harakaris and I are, uh, you know, concerned about this from a south end standpoint, that we, um, actually change our ordinance because we don't want these, if we don't want these trucks going down Oakton, then we should change the law to make sure that these trucks can't go down Oakton or that we find some other solution here. Um, earlier it was discussed the potential of a, uh, you know, citywide logistics study. Maybe that's something we need to engage in, uh, to, to understand, you know, what do we want the city of Evanston to look like in this century? Do we want semi trucks? Do we want to be a city that removes more of that out of our city bounds and, you know, begins to push companies toward using smaller, maybe even electric delivery vehicles, so we don't have that congestion and that smog in our community and, you know, figure out, you know, what we can do to encourage that. And so, um, I, I urge that we vote no and that we, you know, maintain somewhat of the status quo or maybe a new status quo that was already allowed under the law and that, you know, those of us on the south end and hopefully throughout the city who are concerned about pollution, uh, and, and traffic safety and all of the other concerns in the area, that we come together and we actually figure out a, uh, longer-term solution. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Revel.
Yeah, I'm, I'm probably going to vote no, just because I feel like a vote, voting no is voting yes because it's already allowed. And I understand why it's here, because there was some disagreement and, you know, it was probably thought that by having council taking some action, that would, that would help, you know, all involved and would indicate something to the community. But I, I think it actually would confuse things because I think our law enforcement officers should not only be looking out for trucks that are coming to deliver to this location, but should be really making sure that people are only using it for the last half mile, no matter where they're coming from. And so I wouldn't want to send anything to, to them that, that may let, that may, and, that may signal to them that we want them to kind of drop their guards on this, on Oakton. Like, I think the, the current, um, the, I'm looking at the, the, uh, the map now, the truck route map now, and I think Oakton between, what is this, Dodge Avenue and Custer is, um, it's not, it's, it's not truck prohibited, so as you said, people can already do this. I think we should just, you know, if anything, um, if we want to train the police department on how to determine whether or not someone is using it within code, using it for the half mile, or working with, uh, our city manager to, to figure out how we can achieve that. But I, I think it's difficult to do. Like, how do you know somebody is using the half mile and not without...
As, as a point of information, there is a half-mile clause in a separate part of code. What we're invoking here is a, a different part of the code where there's not a half-mile restriction.
I'm sorry, okay. So this isn't the half mile. So this is just because of the day I have...
This is the operational constraints restriction.
So how would they know that these trucks are the ones that are delivering to this location? I would imagine, as similar to the other issue we just had.
If there are other trucks in Oakton, they, I mean, they're not going to, they're not going to know.
They're not going to know.
Right, but the idea here is that, um, Evanston Lumber would inform their suppliers, you know, to request that their drivers use this route, which would mean a maximum of 30 trucks a week. Inevitably, not every driver's going to get the message, so in reality, it's going to be something less than 30 trucks a week. And we're not proposing, we're explicitly not proposing changing the, the truck route. If, you know, one of the ideas initially on the table was, let's make Oakton a truck route. Um, we're not proposing that.
For this to be valid, though, does it require action from the council? For them to...
I guess that's a question for the, the city manager. This, this started under, under our current city manager's predecessor, uh, and, and what we're being asked to vote on is a staff memo.
So I guess Council Cummings even, again, I, this is different from the half, the last half mile. So for this, does it require, in order for them to exercise it, the drivers to exercise it, does it require any action of, of, of council?
So my understanding is the action of the council that's being asked here today is really to give direction to our enforcement agents, the police department, essentially not to write tickets, um, under the code. And so what I'm looking for right now is what I just happened to realize, is the resolution itself is missing in the packet. Um, so I need to look, look at that and see what the language actually itself says, uh, and what provisions of the code we're seeking to not enforce. Um, so that's my understanding of what the council action is asked of today. That direction can simply be given to the city manager who is tasked with enforcing all the city's code to say, "Hey, just don't write tickets in this area."
And that's what concerns me is that, I, I think what concerns me is that either way, there are some trucks who are traveling down this part of Oakton who are exercising the last, last half mile, and I don't think reasonably that our law enforcement will know the difference between any of them. So I just, I, I don't think this is really doing anything. Um, and that's why I'm going to vote no. And, but I, you know, support what they're, both councilmembers are trying to achieve. I just don't think this really does much of anything. Um, okay, that's all.
So to, I just found the, the language. To answer Councilmember Burns' question, 10-1-9-2A3 does allow, uh, vehicles to use non-truck routes when physical characteristics of the street intersection or viaduct cause operational or safety problems to reach the final destination. So that, that is already allowed by city code.
Councilmember Revel.
Um, when, when we saw the video just a few minutes ago, um, I, I think I saw a flagman, um, helping, helping the truck back up. Is that correct? So is, is that, is that standard practice that somebody would...
I think that flagman might have been there for the Main Street Water Main project.
Oh, okay. Because I was, I was thinking...
Just helping out.
I was thinking maybe it was, um...
Phase two of which, incidentally, is happening next summer.
Right, yeah. Um, I mean, somebody to be at the back of, you know, on the street helping the truck back up, I think, would be good standard practice. I don't, but... It was just a, a question.
Councilmember Kelly.
Just a question. So what are the trucks getting ticketed for now? I mean, that we're trying to give...
The trucks are not getting ticketed because they're not deviating from a truck route. So the, the concern is that were they to avail themselves of 10-1-9-23, which allows them to, because of this operational constraint, deviate from a truck route and go down Oakton and turn north on Custer, that ordinarily they're, we're not, except for this exclusion, they're not allowed to be on Custer, and they therefore might be ticketed. And if council didn't have to vote on this, it'd be great. I mean, I'm not...
Councilmember Harris.
This seems like it's a nightmare. Um, big brother, little brother. Um, it's unfortunate because I see the potential for danger on both sides of the schools, the residents, um, and I don't know that there's any clear, quick indication of how to fix this. What I have heard this evening, though, is that we're having a truck problem, and we really need to think about what that looks like overall. We have residents concerned about trucks parked in their, um, neighborhoods. So I feel like maybe we need to slow down and look at this on a bigger scope.
No one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we'll go back to Councilmember Reed with two and a half minutes left.
I, I think everyone's kind of expressed their concern. So I, I, I'm just going to reiterate, I hope that we, you know, vote no on this and that vary, or just delay it and not, we can table it. I have another item that's coming up next that I'm going to table until the summer. Maybe we can table this until then, and I think we should actually engage in that, uh, uh, you know, logistics study or whatever we need to do, uh, to really understand what our, our goal is here. And I think that would fit in with our CARP goals, that would fit in with our equity goals, uh, to really take some time to address, uh, the, the utilization of these kinds of trucks in our community. Um, so, yeah, that's it.
Councilmember Burns with two minutes and 25 seconds left.
Just for the sake of the exercise, I had to ask Laura Biggs to, uh, come up with some... rough calls of what it would take to relocate the embankment, that if there were some additional space, y'all received it, that could be added, that it could be created at the embankment at Main and Custer, what would the cost be? And they came back with four to five million, which I don't think we're prepared to do for one business. But I just, I brought it up at the last meeting and so for the folks at home who are following, you know, I just want to let you know that that is what we got back, four to five million.
Councilmember Kelly with four minutes and 50 seconds left.
Yeah, this is a really hard call. It just feels like there should be another solution somewhere in here. I don't like the idea of trucks going down Oakton by schools and, but I also, and.
There are two, there are three, there are two schools on Main, three schools on Main Street.
On Main Street. Yeah, and in this video is impressive. I just wonder if there isn't, it just seems like even, I don't know if it's four to five million, but I do wonder, you know, and I also want to support Evanston Lumber. It's a longtime, you know, legacy business. But it just feels like there's gotta be some other solution that isn't either frequenting Oakton or a four to five, or, or that the, perhaps Evanston Lumber invests some money in, in making this a better turn? I don't know.
With four and a half minutes left, Councilmember Revel.
Well, if, if the truck doesn't come with a flagman, maybe Evanston Lumber would like to send somebody out from their office when a delivery truck is coming to help them do the turnaround, just to make sure that we don't keep knocking over stop signs and potentially doing something worse. Anyway, just a thought.
Seeing that no one else is seeking to speak on this, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Saffredin?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Um, no.
Councilmember Harris?
With two voting in favor and seven voting against, the resolution fails. Councilmember Reed, would you care to make a motion on item A5?
Yes, I move item A5, ordinance 108, 108, 108, oh, 22, amending city code section 10, 11, 13, schedule 13. Second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of ordinance 108-oh-22. Councilmember Hadekakis, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, so I'm looking to table this until the second meeting in July, which I believe is July 17th. And, and to, and, but before I actually make the motion, I just want to, because I saw a face, and I want to explain, you know, why it's being tabled that long. I want to make sure that, so we have a business in the eighth ward, and I don't want to take up too much time, but we have a business in the eighth ward, similar to this, who has semis that are coming through the neighborhood. The business has been there since the 1940s, but they have not had semis coming into the neighborhood since the 1940s. This is something that the neighbors have expressed is new in the last 15 years, at least from one neighbor expressing the timeframe that semis, and it's become even more frequent in the last few years as this business has grown, which is good. They have several locations not outside it, they have several locations outside of the city of Evanston, and, you know, those are, I haven't looked at all of them, but located in commercial zones. You know, this is a completely residential neighborhood where trucks are showing up as early as, you know, in some cases, 3:30. I've heard 4:30 more often in other times with their refrigerators humming, they can't turn the semis off, we're having enforcement problems. This has been going on for years. The previous council member, my predecessor, has, you know, tried to deal with this as well, and it just seems as though we can't get a solution. Staff has reached out, eventually, you know, and had unsuccessful attempts to communicate. Eventually, the Clessen Wholesale did meet with the police department, but even after that meeting, you know, there were complaints from residents about some of the agreements with the police department not being followed through. And so, you know, I, I think we can look at this, you know, I think this is, you know, we moved this out of committee here to council, and hopefully this will bring Clessen to the table to try to have another round of discussions. And if not, I think we do really have to look at, you know, this, this ordinance or some version of it down the road, but I think we can give them time to prove themselves and that'll be midsummer. And then lastly, I'll say that, you know, similar to Evanston Lumber or, you know, in my case, Clessen Wholesale, I think we have to think, what do we want in our neighborhoods here in Evanston? What kind of environment? How are we gonna meet our CARP goals, our equity goals? And, you know, would you want semi sitting out in front of your residential neighborhood, you know, for any period of time, let alone, you know, multiple deliveries a day with their refrigerated trucks humming, you know, quite loudly? And, you know, should we, if a company wants to maintain operation, and again, I'm looking at Clessen in a completely residential neighborhood, you know, is there a cost to, to that operation? And does that cost mean that they have to use smaller staging vehicles to move their materials somewhere else to a commercial zone where they can have semis come rather than, you know, having semis come directly to this residential neighborhood? So with that, I move to table this to the second meeting in July, which I believe is July 17th. If that happens to not be the date, then whatever the second meeting is.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves to table ordinance 1, yeah, ordinance 108-oh-22 to the July 24, 2023, regular meeting of Evanston City Council. Councilmember Burns, I think it was, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 108-oh-22 will be tabled, will be, yes, tabled until the July 24, 2023 meeting of Evanston City Council. Mark your calendars now. This brings us to item R1. Councilmember Hadekakis, do you want to make a motion on item R1?
Sure. I move, yeah, I can move in both. I move R1 and R2, resolution 85R22, amending city council rule 9.7, and R2, resolution 86R22, amending city council rule 9.10.3.
Second.
Councilmember Hadekakis moves passage of resolutions 84 and, sorry, good lord, 85 and 86-R22. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, thank you. So we originally tabled this to this date in anticipation of the November Rules Committee meeting, which did not occur, but we do have a Rules Committee meeting set for the third, fifth, or whatever, the next, for next week, which would allow us the time, if, you know, if we put our caps back on and think back to that moment, the reason we held is because Councilmember Burns, myself and others, were interested in looking at an amendment to this at rules and having that discussion then. I think, you know, that still stands and so I'm hoping that we can follow through with that and table this until the 18th, which would, or some later, 18th would be after the rules.
18th of what month?
Of this month. The 18th of, yeah, no, the 18th of December.
There's, there's no meeting then. 12th?
Oh, I'm sorry, the 12th, yes. I'm sorry. The 12th of December. And that'll allow us to have the discussion at rules, you know, have those amendments move forward and move forward with this as appropriate.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves to table both of these items until the December 12th meeting. Councilmember Harris, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadekakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the items will appear on the December 12th city council agenda. This brings us now to item S1. Would someone care to make a motion on item S1?
I move approval of mental health service providers to enable residents in holistic case management services to rapidly access needed services.
Second.
And I guess I, I ask this to come off the consent agenda because of the concerns that were expressed during public comments. So Sarah, could you give us some background, please?
Councilmember Revel moves approval of item S1. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Before any discussion, we'll hear from.
Hadekakis, does it have to be an Altuve jersey?
Councilmember Saffredin, I think you may want to mute yourself until called on. So we'll.
Apologies, everyone. Thank you. I apologize.
We'll start with a presentation from staff.
Thank you. Sarah Flax, interim community development director. The, some, some of the concerns that were raised about this funding is really based on not looking at what the purpose of this particular funding application was for. Some of you don't have the history of the change in the process for allocating social services funding that began in 2020. Great timing, right in the middle of a pandemic, but was really coming from the recommendation of the staff social services core committee to focus our resources on our community members with greatest needs and really try to help them get the services they needed, providing wraparound services. And in essence, this resulted in the combining of several of our committees. So we now have two committees, and the social services committee is responsible for the public services funding that is CDPG, but also what we traditionally call our mental health services funding, which is actually from the human services fund. And we have a three, three types of funding that are being allocated in this process. One is for robust case management, for people, individuals and households with complex needs who really lack the ability to go out and find the other support services they need for themselves. Safety net services that are the types of things that almost anyone can need in an emergency, like the, somebody loses a job and needs food, somebody is a victim of domestic violence, needs those services, number of types of things under that. And then the third new category was something we've never done before, which is getting a system for procuring services that the case management client needs, clients need. So you're working with the agencies that are providing those case management services, identifying what the client's needs are, and then figuring out what, how we can procure those services for those clients. The social services committee had done significant discussion about what should be the focus of this. This is, this is really a new model and we haven't found anybody who's doing it quite this way in the country. We have a number of people who are interested in how we'll make it work. But the problem is when you need, say, somebody needs mental health services, they're in case management, they get referred to a bunch of different agencies, and depending on what their funding is, whether they're Medicaid or whether they have no insurance or what, they get put in a queue or a line for whatever that funding source is, and it can take them a really long time to get into services. So this is an attempt to really provide access to the services rapidly. So we did something quite different. We, and we said, this goes way back to the explanation of how we, we might reach out to different providers. Maybe we can use for-profit providers for certain things like this, where we're paying a fee for service in essence, and if their fees are comparable or in a range that is reasonable and they provide the services, why could we not go to them? And so some of our providers were concerned that we should be supporting only nonprofit mental health providers, but they aren't necessarily able to provide some of the same services on the same basis, because this is really being able to get new people, clients who are not currently accessing services on their own, but are being helped get to this through their caseworkers to get into services. And the social services committee really decided that because mental health services were such a huge need of everyone, but especially of our, our residents who have been really impacted by COVID and have the even greater challenges, that we should focus only on mental health services up for this first attempt at providing supportive services. We had a task force of the social services committee that actually worked on how to define what services we needed, you know, and there was a lot of discussion with the case management agencies. So the case management agencies also, in addition to the ones we're funding, we include some services that are being provided or some people who are being helped through services that aren't funded directly by the case management part of that, including our own human services group that works with GA clients and our youth and young adults workers that really work with a very high need group that are, in essence, in case management. Anyway, so the application was opened in late summer. We actually did hear from the mental health task force. They were concerned about not having a long enough period of time. The time for the application was extended to attempt to address that. And we really got some really strong applications. The social services committee spent really considerable time at their meeting on November 10th, going through the applications or the pros and cons. And their decisions, staff's recommendation was to really look at, you know, it's the first time doing this, let's keep it reasonably simple and not say, oh, let's include all of the applicants, because that would be a logistical nightmare, I think, to manage. And the committee came up with three applicants that they chose to fund and, or recommend funding for. And the criteria included being able to really deal with the populations, which many of whom have barriers to accessing service or are uncomfortable with, you know, the services that they have been able to at least try to access in the past for cultural reasons. Maybe they didn't feel they had practitioners that they would be comfortable with. So those were the, the types of questions that were asked in the application, like, do you serve people with this type of background? And they all had to give a pricing system for individual, family, and group counseling, if, or any combination of those that they wanted to offer. And the organizations selected were all in, within a reasonable range of each other. There, you know, there is a range to the cost of services, but that's normal, too. But then we also were looking for organizations that either had Evanston locations or would provide services in Evanston locations. And a number of agencies could do one or the other or both, but one of the things we wanted in addition to just having an office that they provide things out of is, would they be able to go to different locations? For example, if you're doing group counseling or groups for young people, we've talked about, could they be after school or could they be at our community centers or other places where there was children, all, those young people already are? So there were a lot of different factors that the committee considered. I think it was a robust discussion. I think the meeting went till 9:30 or something like that on this date. But it, I think there is confusion about what the purpose of this funding was. It is not, even though we certainly tried to describe it adequately, I thought, it really isn't just agencies. Our historic funding was agencies could apply for what they, for the services they provide. And then either the Housing and Community Development Act would decide on CDPG and the Mental Health Board would act on the local funds. And it was agency focused. It was, are they doing good work? Yes. You know, they all are. All of our agencies are doing good work. But this is focused on getting services to this specific group of people that the city has targeted as being at greatest need. And that's why it is. that's why it is different from past allocation processes. And we have representatives from all three of the agencies, the organizations, here if there are specific questions about their services. I also have Jessica Wingeter on Zoom, because I'm sure there are questions that may come up that I can't answer as ably as she is. But, but it's the third stage in a rather long transition to a new funding process.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Burns.
So, so the, the grant is going to three groups. Are they, are they collaborating? Are they, how are they working together? What-
We'll have agreements with each, but it isn't an absolute, you will get this amount of money. What it is, is they will work, the, the case management clients, or the case managers themselves, will reach out to find who has services that are appropriate for their clients. And then, once they are in services, they will, it's going to be paid on a, on a fee-for-service basis. In other words, if, say, somebody, one of the organizations has a youth group, that group may be already in existence from some of their other services. They can, they would, we would pay a fee for any individual who comes through this. It wouldn't necessarily require them to have a whole group of the one type of people seeking services, or we would really have a challenge getting anybody into services. But for individual or family counseling, there would be a fee for services, and each one of the agencies provided its proposed number of sessions for shorter-term or medium-term needs. One of the other things that the committee felt was very important was that the, there was some way of moving people into continued services after that, which included two of the agencies, except Medicaid. And the other has its own system for raising money to provide fee assistance to people in financial need.
Yeah. Now, so I can appreciate that it's really a very different fee-for-service compared to grants directly to, you know, the wonderful nonprofits we have in the community who are providing those services. So do you, do you think that the members of the mental health group, a collective, whatever they call them, do they, did they understand, not, not the committee, but the-
Mental Health Task Force.
Yeah. Did they, did they understand the difference in, in the program this year?
Well, we certainly tried to explain it to everybody. There were meetings. There were also a number of meetings before the application itself was developed to discuss this with providers. And not everybody was involved in that. But I, I don't think it was, it wasn't a sudden, we did something different. On the other hand, this has been a long timeframe to roll this whole new program out, and it is a little hard to keep track of.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
Um, yeah, I was just gonna say, based on, you know, where the council is, I think the request from some of the members of the Mental Health Task Force was to refer it back to the Social Services Committee. I think if we want to find some middle ground, this is a resolution. If it wasn't, we'd do intro and action. But it is a resolution. So we could, you know, you know, table this, hold or table this to the next meeting, and allow an opportunity for myself and whoever else is interested to meet with the mental health, members of the Mental Health Task Force, to hear their feedback, and, and then make a final decision. Then, I guess my, my, my main concern is that, and I did voice this to individual members of the task forces, that I would have loved to hear from them at the Social Service Committee meeting during public comment. I think that was a wonderful opportunity for them to express kind of their, their views on this. But I think after hearing from them, if, if, if you don't think it would disturb, you know, the allocation process too much, I think at least giving us some time to meet with them, and for us to address this during the next council meeting, during public comment as well. It's important that we bring that group along. You know, they've done a lot of, they've been a really important partner to the city. And I think hearing from them makes me at least want to say, let's, let's hear them out. And I don't know if they were prepared to do that tonight. We didn't hear them during public comment, so doesn't make sense to allow for that.
I'm, obviously, if that is the council's wish, we can have further discussion. I do want to say that both Jessica and I did have considerable discussions with people, and we're happy to do it more. I think that one of the questions is, are, I would, in order to figure out what our next steps would be, or what the Social Services Committee's direction to the Social Services Committee is, because I think that they really made their best recommendation, at least what they thought was the best, based on this funding model. And so I don't really understand what we would change from just that discussion.
If I could just, just one concern, I think it's Skylight, which I actually support, and will continue to support, because I think they're a really diverse group, which I didn't see that in many of the other groups, especially, you know, members of Latinx community, but black women and black men.
Right.
Which, from what I've heard, is difficult to identify black men to work, not only as therapists, but also as teachers. So we need more of that. So I actually support Skylight. That being said, I think one of the concerns was that they don't accept Medicaid. I think is one, one of the concerns.
Right. They, they do have the representative here who can talk about their fee assistance, if that would be of any help to the council.
It's up to this group. I mean, I think if we're gonna bring it back again, then they could do it at the next meeting. They can address this at the next meeting. But it's up, I don't know where the council is, I guess. So I'll, I'll hold there until I hear from everyone else.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Kelly.
Yeah, my, well, I, I think we can, my recommendation is with, that we would send this back to the Social Services Committee. The next meeting is on the 8th, correct, Sarah? Yes, 8th of this month. And I think that's where I got the 18th mixed up last time. So, and so I'd refer this to the Social Service Committee for the meeting that occurs on the 8th. That'll give us some time to, you know, let the, the mental, yes, Mental Health Task Force weigh in further to have those concerns. I know at the Social Services Committee where this was passed, there are some missing, there are some members that didn't attend that meeting, including myself. And, you know, there are some members who expressed, you know, I think there was something with the packet, and a little bit of confusion about getting everyone on the same page and having the full information. So I think there would be a slightly different conversation to take place, particularly with these new groups involved. We can still get this back on the agenda. Hopefully, we won't need a presentation at the next meeting, because the 12th is already becoming a very packed meeting. And so, you know, I think with the Social Services Committee having a second look at this, giving it a second blessing, I think this council could feel comfortable moving forward with whatever their recommendations are.
Just one note, it's really tough to get something from the 8th to the council meeting on the 12th. I don't know that that is feasible.
Thank you.
Is that a motion, councilmember?
Well, well, I don't want to make sure I'm burdening. So if, I think it's just the recommendations. I think it's gonna mirror somewhat close to what we are, what we have now. And I think it'll just kind of be a-
Sort of like a continuation.
Yeah, just kind of copying and pasting whatever was on the agenda there and moving it here. If there are minor changes, then they're minor changes. But I think, you know, we can, maybe the agenda won't come out until that Friday again, because the 8th is a Thursday, correct? Yeah, so the agenda would have to come out on Friday.
Is that a motion, councilmember?
Well, I, I see some concern on my colleagues' faces, and I wanna, yes, so it's a motion. I'll move it, and then we can discuss it.
Councilmember Reed moves to refer item S1 back to the Social Services Committee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, Councilmember Hadekadrik's seconds. I have a bunch of lights on, is, so the people whose, whose lights have been on are Councilmembers Kelly, Winn, and Burns. Are any of those to discuss this motion to refer? Uh, Councilmember Winn, in that case.
Well, I, I can see the value of having some extra time to, as Councilmember Burns was saying, to discuss this issue and the allocations with some of the groups that we heard from tonight during the, the public comment. But I don't necessarily think it should go back to the Social Services Committee for a redo, because this has clearly been a long process. And what I would see as useful is perhaps explaining the process more carefully to the, those who are unhappy with it. But I don't necessarily think that it would be appropriate to send it back so that a different outcome would come out of it. I, I think airing it for the next, until the December 12th meeting, so that people all have an opportunity to talk to, to other members of the council, and would be worthwhile. But I don't necessarily think that's fair to everyone who's participated in this process, to have it get up here and then be sent back and changed.
Can I directly respond to that, if there's no one ahead of me?
There are a bunch of people in line. Do you have a, do you want to withdraw the motion, so she can make the motion she just proposed?
Not yet.
So let's, let's stay in, in order, then. Next, in that case, is Councilmember Burns, with 2 minutes and 55 seconds left.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, I'm sort of fine either way. I think my concern is that some of the, I think some of the concerns ultimately may not be addressed at the committee, even if we bring it back. I think it really is gonna come down to what this, you know, this, what this council decides to do. One of the things that I recommended at, at the committee level that didn't get support is, let's just, let's just leave it open. Let's just add another provider, potentially, to go from three to four. I think there were maybe eight or nine that applied. Am I, am I remembering that? Maybe seven, six, how many?
There were 11.
11. So that, and, and, and I know that would be a nightmare in terms of, for staff to, to, to keep up with reporting. But something I did recommend is, look, let's, let's add one or two. Yes, it's, it's not 11. It will add some additional reporting on staff, but it's not, it's certainly not approving 11. And that may be a compromise, because I think some of the groups would like to see some, I think the way they described it, you know, nonprofits that are kind of rooted in Evanston and have served the community for a while. So, again, I'm fine either way. I just feel like we, the council also needs to hear from the group, and not just the committee ultimately. Because I think some of the changes that we may want to make will be made here, and not necessarily, you know, by sending it back at, back to committee.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah, so I guess I did, I mean, I do feel like it should go back to the committee. I think that is the, the appropriate venue to really be discussing this, and also to be hearing of some of the other, some of the concerns that we heard this evening. I think that's really where it should be hashed out. Who's on the task force that you mentioned? Is that-
Who was on the task force that works with staff? It was two of the committee members. I don't, off the top of my head, remember. One was Demita Cravens, who is now actually in our youth services, uh, youth and young adults team. And the other, I do not, I think it was Amanda N'Gola, but I'm not sure.
Two staff members?
No, no, no. Two of, they were both on the Social Services Committee, and both practitioners, mental health practitioners themselves.
Yeah, no, but I do agree. I think that that's the appropriate place to, to, to reassess the providers. Thank you.
Uh, back to Councilmember Reed, with 3 minutes left.
Thank you. Councilmember Winn, and Councilmember Burns, both of you, I hear what you're saying. And I, I think all of it's possible. I think it's possible for council members, and I think it's prudent for council members to, you know, have those discussions. But I also think that, you know, a lot of, we, we hear from our committees, we've heard it for a while, that people feel like their input isn't being taken well. I think it makes sense to send it back to this group, as Sarah just pointed out, of folks who are actually mental health practitioners, folks who have the expertise, and let them take a second look at this. And, you know, that allows for an open public discussion, that's compliant with OMA, so the public can be a part of it and hear what's going on. And, you know, again, it doesn't prohibit any of us from having individual meetings with, with the Mental Health Task Force, or its former members, or anyone else. And so, you know, I, I think, you know, we can accomplish all of that by sending this back to the Social Services Committee.
No one else is seeking to speak. The motion on the floor is Councilmember Reed's motion to, uh, Councilmember Revel, with 4 minutes left.
Right, well, I, I guess I have a question. So the purpose in sending it back to the committee would be the possibility that the committee would change its, its recommendation? Or is it more just for, an opportunity for all interested parties to have a further conversation? So they better understand this new model. Because, because I do remember when this new model was originally discussed, way back when? Was that when I, anyway. It's, and it, it seemed to me like a really, really good approach, to really provide, I mean, we know we have families and individuals who need these wraparound services. And so I don't want to send, I wouldn't want to signal that I, I want the committee to kind of reverse course. And so I, I guess I'm not clear on what, what we're sending it back to the committee for.
So, so I, I can speak for myself, and everyone's for their own reasons. But, you know, I don't have a particular, you know, outcome in mind, that I want the committee to change its opinion, or that I even want the committee to necessarily stick with its opinion. What I want the committee to do is have an open forum, where our experts can hear that what I think are very valid, and, I'm sorry, Mayor Bissamah, very valid and legitimate concerns about this, and, you know, have an open committee discussion, and respect the, you know, the, the experts who are putting their time toward this. And let them, you know, not just let the council take this and, you know, maybe make amendments or not, but at least hear from our, our mental health providers who serve on this committee, if, if they are, you know, agree with any of the concerns that are being raised by the Mental Health Task Force folks.
Councilmember Revel, you still have the floor. In that case, we'll go back to Councilmember Burns, with a minute 45 left.
Yeah, if we do refer it back to the committee, I just want to make sure we can also hear from the Jocelyn, the three organizations that are on the packet today, Jocelyn, Metropolitan, and Skylight, that we allow them an opportunity to, to answer questions there as well. But I, I want to make it clear, I think what I've heard expressed is that there, there is some hope that we will award different providers. You know, maybe in addition to is, would be my, what I would support personally. But, but that is what we're taking a look at. So I think it's all of the above. I think the folks that are calling for this are also looking for us to potentially reverse the decision that was, you know, to, to potentially award new providers. And I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. I just want to be clear on that. That, that is, they have some concerns about some of the providers that were, that were allocated funding.
The award is only $200,000. So adding-
Is it 150?
No, it's, it's, it's actually more than that, because that's for one, that's for the group, and then there's additional. It's another 150,000 for the-
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
But I do want to note that the committee did say there would be an assessment as well, because this is a new thing, and nobody knows quite how it's going to work. So it's not like they're getting a contract amount, that they are guaranteed that amount, as they say, they have to use. And so it was also expected that we would look at the performance, and were people getting into services, and did we have to add additional providers? Or even maybe if a provider wasn't doing a good job, then maybe, you know, we would choose different ones. But, but that obviously can be done at any point in this kind of fee-for-service type approach to trying to fund something.
Councilmember Burns, still has the floor.
Just as, as long as we think we can get it on for the 12th, depending, you know, assuming that there's kind of minimal changes, I'm, I'm happy to support referring it back to the Social Services. I just want everybody to be on the same page about what type of discussion will occur there.
I, I think we can't. I mean, just to be, like, I'm, I'm looking at Dave and Luke's body language. I, I don't think anybody's committed to getting this on the agenda on the 12th, if it goes back to the Social Services Committee on the 8th. Dave, do you want to?
Good evening, Dave Stormack, Deputy City Manager. It'd be very difficult to revise a memo. If substantial changes were made, then we have to rewrite the whole memo and put the new information in. And that takes time, and then we have to get the packet out for approval before we can send it out. So it's challenging to add something on the last day that we try to get the packet out. And that's what, this would be, Thursday night is the meeting, Friday, we're trying to get the packet out. So that's very challenging to make it all work correctly.
So the next time this would appear, would, if not December 12th, what's the next opportunity?
Right, so if this would appear on the December 8th Social Services Committee meeting agenda, and then not have time to make it to the December 12th meeting, then it would get bumped to the second Monday in January. Uh, January 9th, I'm told.
Uh, January 9th, I'm told. Councilmember, hold on, Councilmember Hatakakis?
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess the feedback I got from community members that asked me about this was, they just wanted a lot more clarity around the process and, and the information behind the providers. I mean, granted, if, if you, if we send it back to the committee, and they meet, and all the questions are answered, there shouldn't be any changes to the memo. But if, for some reason, and it's, it's all up to the committee members at that point, if they, if they change their recommendations based on community input, maybe we should think about pushing it and, and, you know, getting it right based on more information. But it, it does seem like, you know, we had the conversation today, Sarah, and it seems like people just need to be filled in on it. So I, I wouldn't expect, like, big changes, but I think it does, I would support sending it back, unless it-
I mean, let me just give sort of a guide of, I, I don't think anybody is seriously considered voting on this tonight. I think everybody wants more time. The motion before us at this time is a motion to refer it to the Social Services Committee meeting, which will occur on December 8th. And a motion that was, has not been made, because it's not in order at this time, but it's been proposed by Councilmember Nguyen, would be to simply hold it. So it, it buys everybody 2 weeks, and then comes back here on December 12th. You know, so in figuring out what you want to do, one question is the substantive question, do you think it ought to go back to the Social Services Committee, or is it really appropriate for this body to be the body to, to kind of think these questions through? And then the other question is a timing question, which is that if, if for whatever reason it's important to you to get this thing heard on December 12th, as opposed to waiting until January 9th, I don't think the referral to the Social Services Committee is consistent with an ironclad commitment to make that happen. So there's, there's a variety of options, and do what you want to do. But to the extent that you're sure you want this thing here on December 12th, then I think it becomes difficult to vote for the referral back to Social Services. Councilmember Kelly with 4 and 1/2 minutes left.
So I concur with Councilmember Hatakakis. I think it goes back, likely nothing will change. But if there is substantial discussion that would lead to significant change, then, then we should wait. I mean, I don't, I mean, it seems like we're more hooked on a date than we are on get, make, doing this right. So, I mean, I think it should go back to the committee. This is, this is the committee that's dedicated to this and putting the time in. And, you know, like, as stated, most likely it won't change, but if it does, then it does.
So seeing no further discussion, again, the motion before us is the motion to refer it back to committee. Will the clerk please take the roll on that motion?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
With 8 voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and this item S1 will be referred back to the Mental Health, sorry, the Social Services Committee, with the hope that it will be heard at the December 8th meeting. That concludes the consent agenda and brings us to call the wards. Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, just one item, 3rd Ward office hours this Thursday, December 1st, from 7:30 to 10 a.m. at Brothers Cave. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 4th Ward, Ward Meeting Tuesday, December 6th, 7 p.m. at Robert Crown. And 4th Ward office hours are going to be Sunday instead of Saturday. It's gonna be Sunday, December 11th, from 2 to 4 p.m. Location pending confirmation will likely be the Evanston May Pop-Up at 8:32 Dempster. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
I won't go through all of this, so I'll just say I'm sending a newsletter out probably tomorrow with some more information. But the highlights are 5th Ward Meeting, December 1st, and then the 5th Ward Campus Community Meeting to discuss the 5th Ward School and the future of Fleetwood Jourdain will happen on the 6th at Fleetwood Jourdain at 6 p.m. And then also, I wanted to say I'll, I'll have more conversations with everyone up here between, between meetings. But I do prepare, I'm prepared to make an amendment to this budget to support Shorefront. I think it is, it is a long time coming that we, we get behind Shorefront in a real way. They have not, for different reasons, they have not really requested funds from the city. I think the last contribution they got was maybe $7,500 a decade ago or so. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity with the transition from, with Dino, who has served this community well, and, and has been truly committed to his work in the city, transitioning it to Larice Bell. I think this is a perfect opportunity for us to, to support Shorefront. So I'll be making an amendment to this year's budget. I want to have some more conversations with, with Hatesh about the surplus, but it seems like this is a, a good year to make a one-time contribution. I'm also working with staff to think about a ARPA request, depending on what happens there, for some capital support for Shorefront. But I think it's, it's time that we support them. It's a good opportunity. And, and then also, we've been working on, I've been working on, I mentioned early in this process, an issue involving staff support. We do not have any staff support as a council. It is very common, I've done my research now, and, and other members of the Northwest Municipal Conference, that there is a line item. We'll, we can figure out exactly what that'll be, full-time staff, you know, virtual as executive assistant, those are discussions that we're still having. But there are neighboring communities in the Northwest Municipal Conference that have a line item to support council. And so that is another amendment that I plan to make. But again, we're still kind of working on, doing research and, and seeing what, what makes the most sense. So I just wanted to, to announce that, and I'll have more information at the next meeting and in between meetings. I plan to have a conversation with everyone who is interested in talking about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Ravel.
Thank you. Just another mention that on December 15th, I'll be having my next 7th Ward Meeting, special topics about the stadium project, and we'll be talking about event day management, including a report from the Northwestern Traffic Engineer about the traffic and parking study that they've been performing, looking at the parking and traffic around the football games.
Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Just want to announce, Ward Meeting on this Thursday, newsletter also to go out soon, hopefully tomorrow. I, I just want to take a second to, to appreciate my colleagues. And appreciate, you know, tonight, for example, we unanimously passed amendments to the Public Nudity Ordinance that brought us in line with recognizing our trans community and, and ensuring that we're reducing the legal liability in our city, and living up to our values and our, and our, and our commitments to, to marginalize communities. And I, I appreciate this council's maturity on that, by not giving in to what I feel is borderline stochastic, I don't, borderline, I don't want to call it terrorism, because I haven't had death threats, but I've certainly had a lot of very hostile interactions about a policy that, you know, as the committee dug deeper into it, admitted that, hey, yeah, we do need to amend this ordinance to live up to our values. And tonight, we adopted that. And so I, 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 I hope folks begin to really assess this council for what it is. And this, this is a council that I think is very unlike other councils. My gray beard can, you know, maybe, you know, give me some, a history lesson on this, but I, I really think this is a council that's willing to work together and willing to do the, the tough things, and willing to hear each other out, and really attempting to get to yes. And I hope that we begin to look at ourselves differently than we have in the past, and we see ourselves as more of a unified body than we are. So we can begin to change this perception both internally and externally, that there's some chaos going on here, that this isn't a body that gets along, that this isn't a body that can't work together, because this is a body that can work together, and that has and does. And I hope that we continue to do that, and I hope that we begin to internalize that, what we really are, and that the community begins to internalize that, so we have a healthier environment for us, for the community, for our staff, for everyone. And so I just want to leave us on that. In this Thanksgiving season, I am thankful for all of you.
Councilmember Hatakakis.
There will be a virtual 9th Ward Meeting on December 7th, from 7 to 9. Hope to see you all there. Newsletter coming out in the next week or so.
Councilmember Kelly.
No report.
Councilmember Harris.
So I just wanted to say that I have been meeting with different departments, and I'm very proud of the city. I've met with the Police Department, been very impressed. The Fire Department, very impressed. Actually, last Wednesday, my father-in-law was having complications, and the Fire Department came and took a really good care of him. So I want to say thank you for that. I've met with Human Services and Administrative Services, and everyone has been very welcoming. I appreciate all of the hard work that our staff does. I know we don't say that enough, but I want to be clear to say that. And I still have a bunch of groups to meet with, but they've opened their arms to me, and I appreciate that. Excuse me. And I have 2nd Ward, we have a meeting tomorrow at 7 p.m. at ETHS High School in the South Cafeteria. So I look forward to seeing everyone there. And Ray Freeman, I'm gonna count on you to help me record.
That concludes the call of the wards, and Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective negotiating, and litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session, and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in 5 ILCS 120/2A, Sections C1, C2, and C11.
Councilmember Newsma moves that the City Council adjourned to resolve itself into executive session for the items previously mentioned. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
With 8 voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 9:28 p.m., the City Council moves into an executive session to begin immediately in the Council member library.